Welcome, everyone. Good evening. We are calling the special meeting to order on Monday, March 2nd, 2020. We're in the council chambers. We're here to listen to our outside agencies tonight, and we've given you a whole five minutes each, if you're here, maybe longer. So it is 5:45, and should I just go by the list, or do you want?
Yeah, there was a list that I had that I believe.
Yeah, sorry about that. I actually have that. So we have a list of, I'll just call it in order, and first up is Kite, Chris Camo. Welcome. Hey, guys. Welcome.
Hello, thank you.
Just name and title, and the floor is yours.
Sure.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Chris Camo, and I am the coordinator for Enfield Kite.
Hi, and I'm Leanne Bolio, and I am the chairperson for Kite and the School Readiness Council. We're, the Kite and the School Readiness Council are combined.
So Kite is Enfield's early childhood collaborative and serves as the town's school readiness council. As such, we oversee the school readiness grant application process and related reporting. It is a great pleasure that we work with Amy Morales from the Family Resource Center as our liaison to the school readiness council. We value our partnership with the town of Enfield. As the school readiness council, we convene the monthly collaborative meetings. So much of the work that Kite does in the town of Enfield and how we delegate staff time in the Kite office is based off of information that we get from the town and the school district. One example of the work that Kite does is in the area of young children's mental health. Kite, based on the need being seen by Enfield kindergarten teachers and early education providers, has taken the lead to connect schools, pediatric practices, providers, and mental behavioral health specialists, and this collaboration resulted in the identification of resources and development of systems to meet the needs of the growing number of children who are coming to school exhibiting challenging behavior as a result of being exposed to trauma and toxic stress. Kite has traditionally, over the years, been able to bring the pediatric practices together. We have done that several times where they are able to come together and share and communicate resources and ideas. Most recently, we formed the Enfield Early Childhood Mental Health Committee, and as such a result of this, gave Dr. Kalman, who I know he was here with Child First, talking about that new resource that's available to Enfield families. So a lot of the work that they do uses the Atrauma Informed lens, and so as a result of this, we have brought together a series of professional development opportunities for early care and education providers, as well as Enfield public schools, and we've also extended those workshops and that what the work that they're doing in those professional development opportunities to families. Some of the other things that Kite has been very fortunate to be part of is the work with Tougen and, most recently, the work with Alice. So the support that you give us allows us the opportunity to bring people together to begin to understand Tougen work and issues affecting our community, such as Alice. So through these conversations, we can create foundations on which the community together can move forward. So those are a few of the work areas that we have been currently working on.
A good focus, a good part of our time is also focused on the work in schools and in the community around the best way to instruct very young children. And I guess I also want to say, part of what Chris was talking about is the mental health, and we are privileged to be part of the larger Enfield work around trauma and its impact on students in our schools. And Kite is, our focus is really on all of the areas that really impact very young children. So Chris and Amy Whitbro from Kite sit and work in conjunction with Jean Hoy and the work that she is doing as well. So we're able to bring that together. The other thing that we've done and continuing to do is really best practices in general for working with very young children, and obviously, we're doing a great deal of work with the schools, but we've also worked with the Enfield Child Development Center and continuing to work with them, and also with the private providers that are part of our community as well, who really don't have the funds to be able to do this work for themselves. So we are able to bring that to them as well, as well as families. So part of all of this, and you know that there's really no way to talk about any one of these things without also talking about the families that are impacted, whether it's school readiness, trauma, whatever it is. And so whatever work is being done that touches the lives of children and that we're working with the providers and the educators, we're also bringing that support to families as well. And so, for example, Peg Olivera is doing a whole initiative with our community, with schools, with, again, some work with the Enfield Child Development Center, and we are also bringing her in to be able to do work with families, too. How do you, how do you, how do any of us as parents really help protect and strengthen our children from all of the stressors that face them in 2020 and allow them to be able to grow and flourish in our community?
Thank you. If you could, before, real quick, explain a little bit more about Alice and what the goals are, and then, and also the connection to, so what's some of the trauma? So I understand you're being generic, but what are some of the things that we're working on that we're seeing so folks realize that, again, there is stuff going on and we are addressing it?
So the work, I'll start with the trauma work. Based on some of the, I remember back when Leanne was a principal and part of Kite many years ago, there was, there was a large discussion based around the Kite table about the number of children that were entering kindergarteners, kindergarten that were really struggling. And so whatever trauma that is, whether it's trauma at home, it comes in many different forms. They were coming to school, and they just weren't ready to sit and to learn, and there were so many bigger things going on. And those conversations really started the work we had done on executive function. We had gone to a training, a three-to-three training, and bought that, brought that work back to Enfield. As a continuum of that work, we started to work with Peg, like Leanne had mentioned, and she just talked about, you know, this is the behavior that there's, that teachers are seeing in the classroom and that parents are seeing at home, and we thought that there was a great opportunity to kind of provide professional development for teachers and early care providers, as well as supporting families through workshops, which we have done. So that has been something that we have, we had started and we are continuing that work. We actually have two opportunities coming up, one this week is a professional development for early care providers, and that is trauma-informed practice that can benefit all children. And then we will be following up with the same type of workshop geared towards families. That would be in March 19th, and that is helping families build supportive environments for young children. So based on that need, we, that was, that we were seeing and we are hearing about, we were able to support through an opportunity to have Peg come to Enfield.
So, and that was a good question about, I mean, what does the trauma, what does trauma look like? People throw that around all the time. So, you know, one of the things that's happening is that we're learning more and more through the study of brain science. And part of what we're learning is that divorce, illness, death of a family member, economic insecurity, work insecurity, home insecurity, all of those things, over time, create changes in the way a child learns and behaves. And it's basically, it's a, it's a physical brain function that is changed because of that kind of ongoing, it doesn't even have to be an event, but, you know, we all know those families in our community, and we're very aware of all those families in our community who are experiencing economic, economic stress. You know, they're working two, three jobs. They're just keeping their head above water, but the jobs that they're taking are, I mean, that's, that's really, they're, it's, it's just, how do I subsist? Not how do I flourish, but how do I subsist? How do I pay the bills? And that kind of constant tension in a home, you know, we think that we're protecting our children, and it's something that they sense, that they're emotionally connected to. And so those kinds of things, over time, really begin to impact how a child behaves and how they learn. So when we talk about trauma, it's not, it's not always that one catastrophic event, but really, it is kind of an ongoing stressors in the home. I mean, it's hard enough for us as adults to deal with that, and we've all lived through those things. But we're learning better ways of helping children to do that in schools and in the community. Sorry for the time, but.
No worries. Any questions from anyone? Counselor Ms. Rosa.
Good evening. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
I remember very clear when Dr. Kalman was here, my concern, and what I, the question I put to him was, early intervention with young children is vital. And we probably do the best we can to identify these households, but I asked Dr. Kalman, and I'd like to ask you, do we have anything on the drawing board to collaborate with our local police department? Because if anybody's in a position to see trauma, it's those people. And this isn't a criminal thing. This is more of what resources in the community, maybe people aren't aware, is there any contact between you and the police department?
So not specifically to, that is a great idea. So we, we actually partnered with the police department. We had an event called Playground Tuesdays this past summer, and each, each event was held at a different playground in different parts of the community, and we asked community partners to come out and to play with the families and the children that were out there. And so we have had that little bit of a connection, but furthering the connection in the way that you just suggested is a great idea.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Counselor Ms. Bosco.
I'm going to ask you the same question and then ask everybody sitting here. What is your percentage of savings to your operating budget? So how much do you have in a fund balance of an additional monies that you got there, your savings account compared to what you, what it costs to run your organization?
Yes, so we.
I guess where I'm going is, is at this point here, it's going to be really a need thing for people. We've got more money than what we really have. So, you know, how much you really need it. If you have savings, you may not need as much.
Yeah. We, so the funding for Kite is really dependent, we depend really on, on the town or the schools and foundations that, private foundations to fund Kite. So each year, that looks a little different. This year, we lost some funding that we had had in previous years from LEGO.
But that's okay. What is your percentage you have in savings to your operating budget? Because if you lost money, that's even more the reason, maybe, to
Yeah.
to give you something. But if you have a big war chest in the bank, you may not need it this year. You may need it next year more.
Right, right.
So that's where, that's where I want to know with the percentage, and if you can't give that to me tonight, if you just get it to the town manager, because I'm going to ask everybody the same question.
Yeah, I would like to do that. I would like to get that to you so that I'm sure what I'm telling you.
Really, this is, this, these things are really for need. You know, if someone doesn't really need, maybe they don't need the whole thing, maybe they need a piece of it, but it's really for need. So if you lost funding, well, that makes, puts you higher on the food chain than someone that has a huge bank account. So, and to be fair, we will ask every single person up here what that percentage is.
Sure. I'd be happy to get that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I know we went over five minutes. Anything else in closing? Go ahead, Ed.
No, just, we'd like to thank you for your continued support, not just through the money, through the social services grant, but the continued partnership that we have with so many from the town, whether the Family Resource Center, Youth Services, the Department of Social Services. We appreciate that, and all of your participation in all of our events, whether it's our annual meeting, any of our community conversations, it is very much appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you both. Appreciate it. Thank you for coming. Thank you very much. Our friends from Loaves and Fishes, come on up. Oh, am I, am I right? Yes, sorry. I'll make sure I, come on up. Welcome. How you doing?
Fine, thank you. Thank you very much for inviting me.
Just make sure that's, that light's on. You're good. Thank you. Just name and title, and the floor is yours. Welcome.
Okay. My name is Priscilla Brayson, and I'm the director of Enfield Loaves and Fishes Soup Kitchen. And I've been with, as a director and with them for 33 years. And we opened up in 1982, and we're open 363 days a year. This past year, we did over 90,000 meals. We gave to the educational resources for children 27,000, over 27,000 snacks. We also cook community dinners. Sometimes it's once a month, sometimes it's twice a month. And that is where the families get together with the children, and they enjoy a nice meal, and they have other activities during that time. This past Wednesday, the 26th of February, we cooked 250 meals for them, which was held at As None to Community College. Enfield Loaves and Fishes just doesn't just feed people. It's a lot more than that. It's a place where the homeless can go. It's a place where people who have substance problems or mental problems, or it can be a place where a man has lost his wife, and he's never cooked. And it's a place for him to come, meet new people, and begin to heal. And I would say Enfield Loaves and Fishes is a place to heal. We have many people that are broken that come to the soup kitchen. And I really believe, as my dad taught me as a child, not only to eat, but also to fish, to feed yourself. And for the 33 years that I've been there, I really believe that I've listened to my dad, and I work with the people there, and I break bread with them. I stay at the meal with them so they can talk to me, and they become trusting with me and understanding. And I can, once someone trusts you and understands you, then, then they open up to you, and then you can direct them, and then you can help them, and actually, they can help themselves. When they become homeless, they come to the soup kitchen, and if they work for me, I open up at 10:00 AM. I'll feed them breakfast. I'll feed them lunch. I'll feed them supper. I'll give them clothes. And without them realizing them, I'm teaching them a job. So they can go out there and be, sustain themselves in the future. I hope that you get an opportunity to read my annual report this year, because I had a young lady that really opened up to me. How she had a terrible event in her life, lost her home, lost her child, was stealing at Shaw's to live, to eat. She came to the soup kitchen because someone recommended it. That was a place she could eat. I gave her a gift certificate to get her nails done. She looked at her hand, and she thought how pretty it was. And she said to me, that was the beginning of her recovery. Said she didn't have to steal anymore because she got free food at the soup kitchen. And with CHR, she was able to talk it out and get back on track, and she's been clean for four years. We work with the community. We partner with all the community in town here, with social service, with the Felician Sisters, the Little Sisters, Mark Twain, Five Cupboards, Sophia, Foodshelf. So we all work together to make this community better for the people that are in need. Each and every one of you are one paycheck away from being homeless. And I'm sure if you dig deep in your family, you may have some of your family that are homeless or need a little help in hand. Why am I here? I have requested a small grant from the town, $5,000. This year, we need to get a sterilizer, which is a little over $7,000, because ours is on its last leg, the door doesn't close, and it's spitting oil occasionally on the dishes. We also need a Bay Marie. And many people say, what's that? That's a sandwich maker. And we use it to put it on the front line to keep the salads cold and the drinks cold, or the desserts, or whatever that we may need to serve. One other thing is, the health department has changed temperatures. That's why we have to get a Bay Marie. Ours was donated to us, and it reads around 45, and it's supposed to be 41 degrees. The ice machine is too small now, because now the health department wants you to have everything on ice when you're serving. Well, that was okay. The amount of those three items is $13,000, and we budgeted those items to be able to purchase them. But then the health department says, no, can't get them. Not that we give you permission. It's a why. We want you to have a hand sink behind the line. Hand sink? Well, we got one in the kitchen. Well, we want you to have one behind the line. Is it mandatory? Yeah, it's mandatory. So I called a couple of people to help me out, to find out, do we really need this? Because the plumbing for that, are you ready? $7,000, almost $7,000. And that's plumbing probably from here to you, Michael. It's a short, maybe even shorter. So now we're talking seven, three, over $20,000. We didn't budget $20,000 for this. We budgeted $13,000. And our budget, I kind of took a quick peek, is $203,000 a year. And I don't know, I'm not the treasurer, so I can't give you what you asked for. So that's why I'm here. I try to be self-supporting. I don't receive federal money, and I don't want it. The door can close tomorrow with federal money, and I don't receive state money. We open like Jesus. Your door is open, we feed you. And somebody asked me, social service, do we feed out of Enfield? We don't refuse anybody. If you're hungry, we feed you. Whether you come from Windsor Locks, Sophia, it doesn't matter. You're there for a reason. And as a nun told me once, you can be the richest person in the world, but you can be very poor when you don't have anybody to talk to. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Any questions? Yeah. Counselor Jiminy.
Thank you, Priscilla. Appreciate it very much, all your hard work. I just have one question. I'm noticing you, you're, you're only requesting a $50 increase from last year?
No, it's the same incre, it's the same.
So you're not looking for an increase?
No, I'm not.
Oh, okay.
No.
How will you be able to purchase your new machines?
We have the money to purchase the machines. It's in our budget.
Okay. So there's, you're not looking for additional funding?
No, other than, in fact, to help us out with the mandated hand sink that needs to be put behind the line. You know, and probably I hate to say this, because it's going to be on TV and all that, but you know, I can't, for one hour serving, I can't see anybody taking their gloves off to turn around and wash their hands again. But I'm not the health department. It's a requirement, and I have to be obedient.
Thank you. I appreciate your work. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
And I come to you because I enjoy your cooking, too, by the way. It's very good.
Very well said, by the way.
Thank you.
Any other que, Counselor Bosco?
Yeah, Priscilla, as you know, I was the one that pushed for you
Yes.
many years ago. So I don't want anyone, any of the people here thinking that I'm trying to not give them what they need. But the problem is, realistically, we have to do this on a most-need basis. So if you can get that number to the town manager's office, you know, when your treasurer is in, at least that'll help. And from what I, what I did with Quick Math, that's 24 people a day you feed on an average. Is that one meal a day? Two meals a day? Or how does that usually work out?
We have more people towards the end of the month, and we cook every day for 100 people, or 100 meals, because some people come up for seconds, and some people come up for thirds.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Priscilla. Thank you very much. Moving on to Enfield People for People. Monica Wright and Lorraine Creedon, please come up if you're here. Welcome. Just make sure the light's on. The floor is yours. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Lorraine Creedon. I'm the treasurer for Enfield People for People. This is our fifth year of operation. We have a minimalist budget, just covering the needs of what we, what we do throughout the year. Our funding is provided by churches, businesses, local organizations, as well as 95 individual and family donations in the last year. We have decided to stay open 100 nights this year. That's 25 nights longer than in the past. And we're looking for support from the town of Enfield in order to maintain that level of being open the coldest parts of the season, from January, February, and all of March, and into the first part of April. This, we have closed earlier, and one year, we lost somebody who was not able to house themselves after the warming center closed. So looking to the town, it's, it's acknowledgement of the need, as well as the the presence of us here, that we are important to you, just like you're important to us, and that monies donated by you will be used to extend the season, and hopefully, we want to also extend the times that we're open from seven, we're open now from 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM. We would love to be in a place where we could open a little earlier in the evening before people are sheltered and trying to find places to be, and in the morning at 7:00, when they have to leave. Right now, they're on our doorstep at 7:00, and we can't let them in till 9:00 at night. They are leaving here at 7:00 in the morning, and the buses aren't picking them up till, I think it's like 7:30, quarter of 8:00.
7:30, yeah.
So they're outside at those times. So that, that's our hope, is that, that with the support of the town, we can use those funds to do more, as well as the recognition by the businesses and other organizations in town that you're behind us as well. And we are just hoping that we will be able to do that. And Mr. Bosco, I could tell you that we have no savings.
And that's what I want to.
None at all.
Not that I want to.
We're, we're developing a cap, we're hoping to develop a way of building funds so that we can, can do more, but we haven't gotten to that point yet, at this point in time. Monica wanted to address.
Good evening, everyone.
How you doing?
Monica Wright, the director of Enfield Safe Harbor Warming Center. Just want to say that we have increased our numbers this year. So far, as of March 1st, we have had 40 people come through our door. We can only accommodate 16, so it's a good thing that they all do not come in at one time, or we would have to turn people away. I look at the grant money as a way for us to not only hire people so that we can open early, but now that we are working with CHR and with Department of Social Services here in Enfield in regards to the grant, where it would be nice to open up the doors early. where it would be nice to open up the doors earlier, so CHR can get a chance to get in and to speak to our guests, and have our guests counted so that they can get the resources that they need. That's one of the challenges that we have, because it's hard for our guests to get in touch with the resources that they need. And to have this money, it helps us to have a staff go in at 7:00 in the evening, so they can meet with someone from CHR, so they can get into the actual system for homelessness, have their CAN assessment, and so that they can start to receive what they need. Another thing I'd like to say is that, you know, we provide transportation every night for them to come and go in the form of tokens and monthly bus passes, because we know that we're far away from them. Most of them come from here in Thompsonville. We're in Hazeville. But we want to make sure that they get to us so that they don't have to stay out in the cold, which is a big expense. We also offer them snacks. We offer them a place to lay down so that they can just stay warm, so that they can be safe. These are costs that, you know, cost us with operation, because we're going the extra mile for them. One of the things is, is that if we didn't have what we had here in Enfield, we would have to send our people out to Hartford. We'd have to send them out to Middletown. We'd have to send them out to Meriden. And our thing is, we keep, take care of who we are and what we have here. So that's what we're looking for when we ask for that. So we can serve our people here, not that, you know, and we're part of the 211 system. So when 211 calls us and says, "We have one of your residents who have called us and need somewhere to stay," I can say, "Our door is open. Just send them to me."
Very good. Good job. Counselors Brazza, then Counselor Mangini, then Counselor Bosco.
Thank you for coming. Certainly, you do important work, no question about it.
You're welcome.
You've been around five years?
Five years, yes.
And maybe I'm reading this wrong. Is this the, last year, you didn't come to the town for any monies? Is this the first time?
No, we came last year. We did attend last year. We did not receive any funding last year.
What did you ask for last year?
Last year, we asked for $10,000 on the recommendation of your social services department.
Okay. And just because, just so I understand, the $7,500, you have volunteers at the shelter, but you also have paid staff also? Or no?
We do have paid staff. Most of our staff is volunteered, but we do have paid staff, because we need to have paid, trained people to be there. Our volunteers are there to help us out, but you have to have people who have been trained, who are able to work with people who are homeless, to work with people who have addiction issues, and to also work with people who may have other issues, such as mental health.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Mangini, then Counselor Bosco.
Thank you. Thank you for putting through your application. I'm happy to see this. You provide a well-needed service for our town, and I applaud your efforts.
Thank you.
And want to ask you to please continue doing the good work that you do. I support you 110%. Thank you.
And we're not going to stop. We're here. We're here to stay.
Because you provide a valuable service for people.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Counselor Bosco.
How many people you average a night?
So we have been averaging 14 to 16 people a night. I'd like to say, too, that one of the changes that have, that we see, there's a shift in who's utilizing our services. We have more females this year who are utilizing the warming center. And we have more females who are over the age of 60 who are utilizing the warming center, because they're living in their cars at this time, and the fear of being out there in the car at their age. So that's another reason why, you know, it would be really important to open our doors up early, when we see more of a number of females and older females who are looking to us to utilize our services.
Counselor Muller? Counselor Guy, then Counselor.
Hi, thank you for coming here tonight. I was just wondering, your guests, do you have an idea where they come from? Like Massachusetts area, or are they all pretty much local?
Our guests are local guests. Not to say that we don't have people who come from maybe Summers, who come from maybe Windsor Locks. We do allow them to stay, but the turnover is like no more than 72 hours, because we need to have our space available for our residents here at Enfield. Like I said before, our numbers have grown. And it's a good thing that they don't all come at the same time, or we would have to close the door and turn them away. But we do. And it's just so people will not be in the cold. But it's for me to make sure that if they're from Windsor Locks, they get into the Windsor Locks system. If they're from Massachusetts, that they need to go back to the Massachusetts system.
Counselor Guy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, what troubles me is that when 7:00 rolls around, you say goodbye to these people. And I'm just wondering, what kind of counseling is done, is provided, to help these people maybe find a job, find an educational opportunity? I mean, to see these people leave at 7:00, I mean, I've gone to the town library, and I've seen people asleep in the library, and that's no place for them to be. But they need a place to go. Are you working on some provisions to find another place where these people can go after 7:00, and also counsel them?
That's a good question. And one of the challenges was, is that because we're here in Enfield, there's not much going around here north for homeless, that our people were not being counted. First of all, because we open at 9:00, we close at 7:00. Most businesses are nine to five. By the time 7:00 in the morning rolls around, and we send them out the door, they're either at the library, or they're other places. And by that time, they're not able to get where they need to go. So it's a good thing that we are working with Department of Social Services here in Enfield, as well as CHR, so we can make sure that our people are counted for, so they don't have to be out at 7:00 in the morning, not doing anything. But we know that they're either going to a program, they're going to an appointment, they're going to some kind of meeting, where we can get them in a place to become self-sufficient. So yes, and every night, I do work with them. I do make sure that they know the resources that are available to them. I do let them know that if they need anything, that we can call 211. We can call, you know, the area soup kitchens, or wherever they need to go for a resource. So we do work with them, too, just to make sure that we don't see them next year.
I just wonder how successful you are in providing that kind of counseling so that these people do not come back again. Do you keep some kind of a record of people? And they come back, and they tell you, "Monica, we got a job. We're doing this. And thank you very much for, you know, for getting us through this tough time."
Yep. So we have, we have housed, we have helped house, maybe like three, since our five years of open. We've had guests come in who were out of jobs, who, some were just out of jail, incarceration, who we've helped get jobs here in the area. We also have, like, three years ago, we had a couple come in who was sent to us from Hartford, because Hartford had no room. So as of today, that couple is housed, they're married, and they just had their second child. So we do work with them so that they can become self-sufficient. So it's kind of like more than a warming center, where we go above and beyond. We just had another one of our guests, who was a longtime guest since we opened up on the first day, who's now a resident at Mark Twain. So we really do aggressively work with the resources and with the people who we serve to make sure that they get what they need. It's just now really getting in the system. And again, I say that we work with Department of Social Services, with Cynthia CHR, because we want to make sure that our people are taken care of.
Thank you, ladies. It's what you provide for our community. It's appreciated.
Thank you.
So I know we're running late on time, but just two quick questions. So if we could, the amount of money that you get from religious organizations, I know St. Mary's is donating a spot, but that's where I want to see. I'm not afraid of donating, but I'm sorry, the religious organizations should be giving more, matching what the town is doing. Because I think it is, again, they don't pay taxes in town. We open up many, we have many good religious organizations in town. And so I'd like to see how many are donating currently, and how many more we can get. And I'd like to challenge those organizations, if they're not donating, and the town's willing to put up some money to help, they should be meeting us on this. That's my only thing, when it comes, we have a lot of beautiful buildings in town that are now no longer paying taxes. They should be helping us with this, in my opinion. Sorry, go ahead.
We have 10 churches that are currently active and making contributions to the warming center. Holy Trinity houses us at no fee. And they do make a substantial, I would say they pay the bulk of what we've been using so far.
So can we get a breakdown of that, if possible?
I can, yes.
That'd be great. And then my only thing, the story you just told about some of the things you've done, we need to, can we see that? You know what I mean? And that's the stuff that we never hear, right? I mean, and that's the good stuff, right? So that justifies the donation from the taxpayers, because to your point, you know what, we're not just handing out, we're actually trying to make them, teach them how to fish, as someone said earlier. But we never get that in, at least personally, I'm just saying, I don't see it. That'd be great to hear. So people realize there is a return on the investment, because guess what? Our goal is to make you, again, go back and be a productive member of society and live your life the way you want to live it. I mean, that's the stuff, if we can get that information, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Okay.
And again, I would like to challenge any religious organizations that aren't currently participating, that they get a hold of you folks pretty quickly. That'd just be my recommendation through you to them, if they're listening.
That's on our to-do list.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. This is red buttons on, name and title, and the floor is yours. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I'm Maureen McGuire. I'm Vice President for Communications, Business Development, and Marketing at CHR. And I just want to start by thanking you sincerely for the continued support we've received through the years. It is deeply appreciated. So CHR calls Enfield home. We were founded here 54 years ago. And we started off as a small counseling center and have grown through the years to meet the needs of the children, families, and adults that we serve. CHR is now the most comprehensive behavioral health care agency in the state. And we provide a range of services, some of which you've heard about tonight. We're very proud of the housing support services that we provide individuals. We provide supported employment to help people gain new skills and become self-sufficient. And the core of our business is mental health and addiction services, again, for people of all ages. And it's a real continuum of services, depending on people's needs. So for some people, it's outpatient care. For some people, it's much more intensive. It's residential care, and that type of thing. And my two colleagues will talk a little more about that. In the last year, CHR served 27,000 individuals throughout the region, including 2,756 individuals from Enfield. Actually, we're just, we're always continuing to grow. We're always continuing to add new programs, again, to meet the needs of the people we serve. In the last year, we were very proud to start offering family medicine, so that's primary care services for our adult clients. People with serious mental illness tend to die 25 years earlier than the general population. So we're very committed to bringing primary care to our clients, and thrilled that we're now doing that in Enfield. We also added new services for veterans. System-wide, we're seeing a 50% increase in the number of veterans and their families who are receiving behavioral health services. We've added some new programs for children that my colleague will talk about. And we continue to see just an alarming number of people who need help with opioid use addictions. In, as I mentioned, in this past year, CHR served 27,000 individuals. That's about a 42% increase since 2015. And that, if you think about it, is about the same time that the opioid epidemic started. Not all of that increase is related to opioids, but a lot of it is. So while we continue to see a tremendous demand for our services, we are requesting, we're respectfully requesting flat funding. It's been flat funding for the past several years, because we are respectful of the many demands on the council and on the town's budget. So we look forward to working with you, and I'm going to introduce Sharon Petron, who is with the Adult Services for CHR.
Hi, I'm Sharon Petron. I'm the Senior Program Director. I oversee the Enfield Outpatient Clinic, as well as our Pathways Methadone Clinic. Large focus of our services this past year has been to try and help with the opioid epidemic. We are now serving folks through the methadone clinic. We provide buprenorphine, and we provide vivatrol, all to try and meet medication-assisted treatment for our clients. We also provide, you know, a large range of mental health and addiction services through family, individual, group. We have an intensive outpatient program that provides services each day for folks to come in and get services. We also work with the town in the opiate task force. We're part, we participate in that as well. And we also work with the police department in terms of the CIT, and trying to work with folks that, you know, chronically have involvement with the police department, and how we can work better and work with them cooperatively. So we've, you know, we work, this is my home. This has been, you know, my home for 33 years, working. And, you know, we really appreciate the support that we get, because a lot of our clients are in all of the town, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I meant to mention that, that about 70% of our clients are low-income. They're extremely vulnerable. You know, that represents the percentage of clients who are on Medicaid, so there's an extreme need.
Hi there. I'm Kathy Schizzle. I'm the Senior Vice President for Child and Family Services. And I do want to also highlight that we do serve folks from Enfield, regardless of their ability to pay. We have sliding fee, as well as many of our services just don't get reimbursed adequately through insurance payment or through our state funding. And for Child and Family, we have the full continuum of Behavioral Health and Substance Use Services. I'm running the gamut from crisis services to outpatient to support services. And we do a lot of intensive home-based services for youth here in town, where we have teams that actually go out into the community, school, home, and work with families and youth. We take a focus that's really family-focused. So even though the youth may be our identified individual that we're working with, we really work to assess all the needs in the family. And because we have the full continuum of ages, we can link them to services at CHR and also to services in the community, as you've heard mentioned, our organization a couple of times in presentations. One of the new programs that we launched this past year is we enhanced the services that we're providing through the North Central Multidisciplinary Team, which is a team of law enforcement, prosecution, mental health, medical, as well as victim advocacy services that work with families where there's been a disclosure of sexual abuse or serious physical abuse. And what we started doing in the past year is really going out to these families, not just reviewing them in team, but going out and doing an assessment of the full, of the entire family. With the recognition that essentially caregivers, as well as siblings and family members, when there's been a disclosure of abuse, struggle as, oftentimes, as much as the youth that actually disclosed the abuse. And what we're doing with that program is giving free treatment to the family, as well as really being involved over a longer period of time to make sure that families who, to make sure they're educated around trauma and the impact of abuse on the child and their functioning going forward. But also to make sure they continue with the treatment recommendations. Because oftentimes, when families are in the throes of that disclosure, they have so many people in their home talking with them that as time goes on, they just want to be left alone. And oftentimes, that's not the best approach. So that team really is going in and really wrapping services around the families.
Just curious.
Yeah.
How would you get a referral on a potential abuse, or between DCF and yourselves? How does that work?
DCF is involved in our team, so we automatically, any cases in Enfield, and our multidisciplinary team does cover five towns, but Enfield is one of our largest.
Right.
And DCF comes to the table. They have to screen all the cases where there's disclosure. They have to screen all the cases where there's disclosure, as well as the police department brings those cases to the table, in order for us to talk as a team about them. Any youth that also go to the Child Advocacy Center in Hartford, come automatically to the team for review also. We just, you know, acknowledge that in order to expect those families to get their treatment in Hartford, it's far away. We wanted to have the ability to offer the care in the local community, because that travel is a barrier.
So the friendly handoff is, or, so somebody mentioned earlier with Kite, right? So I'm always, I'm still always trying to get my hand, my head around the friendly handoff, right? For example, Kite, there's the Alice program, where they're trying to get people self-sustaining. And part of the problem with Medicaid, you mentioned, is that an individual actually gets promoted or gets a job, well, if their child needs medication, Medicaid may take the money away from medication, which makes zero sense.
Absolutely.
So how does it work? I mean, so how do we change it, right? So, so the question is, how does, how do we influence Medicaid, where, for example, I think it's a worthwhile program, where, again, as you become self-sufficient, you actually get more, you know, in theory, the same benefit, or a little bit more, so if your child needs medication, they're going to get it. So you can go to your job, or you need childcare, or whatever it may be, as opposed to every time you actually make a step up the ladder, they pull you back down.
Right.
You know, that's what I, I mean, I love it.
It doesn't make sense, does it?
And it should come from, and so it should come from organizations like you, saying, "Look, here's how we're going to reform it, so we can, again, the money that you're using, local tax dollars, we get people to where we want them to go." Which is, again, to be self-sustaining, but again, still getting the need that the town or the government should be providing. You know what I mean? That's what I'd love, to be able to get all these organizations together, and say, "How do we actually do that?" Especially if the federal government's not going to, you know, they're already cutting, I know there's issues, there's many strings around Medicaid, and I understand some of the things you have dealing with the state. So then, how do we change it to local level?
Yeah, I mean, I think-
I'm going to put you on the spot, but I think, you know, I think that's what I, out of this, is that I'd love to be able to get all these organizations together, and say, "Okay, you know what? The town is providing whatever it may be, and here is our plan to get, you know, as we all work together, here's the friendly handoff for this, here's the friendly handoff." So I have a nice little, maybe it's not a flow chart, so I apologize if I'm simplifying it, that I know that when we, because again, when we go out and talk to people, we see people who you probably don't even know that could use your services. You know, and we're, you know, that's what, you know, we spend the money, there's so many people who need those services that aren't getting them. I appreciate you making a comment about outreach, I think that's how we find out who really needs the services, as opposed to folks coming into your office or a referral. We actually got to go find them. So I know there's a whole lot into one, but I, you know, I think, yeah, right ahead.
Can I talk about the outpatient department? But we provide a large number of outreach services in the Enfield office as well. So we have community support folks who provide assistance with finding housing, getting financial assistance, getting to, you know, the soup kitchen, getting the other basic needs that they have. We have an assertive community treatment team here in Enfield, that also provides a doctor, a nurse, and various service, employment services on the team, all trying to get people to be as independent as they can be. So there are a large number of outreach services as well.
Yeah, and, you know, I really think that as a community, we can come together to kind of, you know, focus on some of these issues. The challenging part that you mentioned is the medication, right?
Right.
So how do you make changes with pharmaceutical companies who are going to charge way too much for a medication that a family needs? You know, we-
You do it by exactly what you're saying, right? You do it exactly what we're saying, by you saying, "Listen, here's our issue, and this individual, here's a great case study, who's got promoted to a job, doing everything we want them to do, using the tax dollars the way it's supposed, oh, by the way, they're going to jack up her child's needed medication by $200 a month, whatever it may be."
Right, or the childcare services are expensive, it's based on income.
Right, you know, that's how we talk about in generality, as opposed to saying, "Look, boom, this is what's really happening." And it's amazing, once you actually put that out there, I bet there's some pharmaceutical companies that say, "Well, I don't really want that bad press, I want to actually work with these local organizations." That's all, you know, I'd love to be able to start doing that, so we actually start putting all the, all the sort of conversation to pen to paper, and start putting some real change, especially, I think, we can make change in Medicaid at the local level, to help people who really want to be self-sustaining, without penalizing them because they want to be.
Right.
And I think that's the backwardsness of it, so to speak.
Right, and the other population really is, we have individuals that go back to work, but their healthcare plans, right, have high deductibles.
Exactly, yeah.
They can't, you know, so they, you know, in essence, don't have insurance unless it's a very serious issue, or they're in the hospital. And how do those families afford to get the healthcare for their needs? So they can come to organizations like ours, which we have sliding fees, based on income, we do have the ability to waive it even lower, based on need, and, you know, with our, our creating family medicine here in Enfield, those individuals also can get walked down, if their healthcare needs are not getting met, get walked down to our first floor to see a provider, because we're worried about their physical health.
Thank you, again, thank you very much, I appreciate you listening to me, thank you. Counselor Sprouse.
I just have a quick question. You mentioned that the increase for services is up 42% about four years ago, so the lion's share of what you're dealing with addiction is the opiates, right? So I'm just curious, do you ever have issues with addiction, or problems with people, not just opiate addictions, but marijuana? Is that ever a problem?
Oh, absolutely. We serve, so we have a methadone clinic, and we treat with medication-assisted treatment, the opiates, but we're also treating people with substance addictions, marijuana, cocaine, crack, any number of substances. They're also, you know, what we say, co-occurring, and we're providing services for them as well.
Great, I'm glad to hear that, because, you know, so often I hear people say, you know, marijuana is not a problem, and I find it ironic that you're the professionals, you're dealing with this, and in Hartford today, at the State Capitol, we're talking about legalizing marijuana.
I know, I know. Yeah, marijuana is the number-one use for adolescents that we treat.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Manchin and Counselor Bosco.
Thank you for the level of funding, by the way, and thank you for all your services. The question that I have, though, yours is the largest request, 36,000-plus. What do you attribute that to? Is it?
Sorry about that.
Is it salaries? Is it supplies? I mean, I don't want a complete breakdown, but where's the bulk of this money used? What is the bulk used for?
Well, it's not a simple answer, I mean, our clients have very complex needs, so it costs a lot to provide the services that we provide.
So salaries?
We have to pay our providers, yeah. We have, we, this is a very intense labor market, this is a very competitive labor market, so yes, we do have to, we have to pay, you know, a living wage to our employees, yeah.
The majority of our budget is for paying our direct staff.
Oh, okay, okay. So you're getting a chunk of it through the grant, through Town of Enfield. Is there other monies that you are recipients of, somewhere else, maybe?
Oh, my goodness. Yeah, I would hope so. Right, yeah, we, we have a number of state and federal grants.
Okay.
Now, certainly with that, when you don't spend the money based on how they designate, you're supposed to spend it, you pay it back, right?
Okay.
And in Connecticut, that goes into the general fund. And then, with federal funds, you know, it's the same, it's the same deal. They, our funders basically say, "This is what you can do with this money," and, blind item by line item.
Okay.
And so, you know, we're always looking at how we can, it's hard to be flexible about if one program is underspent, and another program needs the money, how to transfer that. It's very difficult from accounting perspective.
Thank you.
Counselor Bosco.
Again, I don't, you know, I don't want to sound like a jerk, but, you know, we've got to ask these tougher questions.
Sure.
What is your ratio of savings to your operating budget? And then, if you can't answer it, you can get it to town manager, and then, I got one other question, I should have asked the other ones, and I hope that they'll respond to the town manager after with this, or if they, if they watch this. Do you own your buildings, or rent them?
Rent.
Yeah, we both, yeah. The ones in Enfield, we, it's combo of lease. So our largest building on Hazard Avenue is a lease, we leased that building. But the clubhouse, which is, the Second Wind Clubhouse on Enfield Street, is where we started, many, 32 years ago, when Sharon and I came. We worked out of that office, we do own that one.
Okay, do you pay property tax on that one? Or are you exempt?
I don't know.
I don't know, we'd have to check.
If you could find out, because, you know, I mean, I hate to say it, all that is taxpayer money. If someone's exempt on a piece of property, and they're saving $5,000 a year in taxes, and we give them $5,000, or $10,000, or $30,000, we're really giving them an extra $5,000. So, and I hope that anyone that's watched, you know, the other people that came before you, when, when they go answer what the ratio is of savings to operating budget, if they could give that answer to the town manager's office, because, again, it all comes down to money, and, you know, the sad part of this is, is we're responsible for other people's money, the taxpayers' money, and, you know, someone may not like this one or that one, but we have to vet this out, and, and make sure that everything's more to the need now than, than want. Thank you.
Absolutely. And we will get you, the answer to your first question, I can tell you, we operate on a very, and both, yeah.
Very slim margin.
Very, very thin margin.
Counselor Hamler.
You provide a lot of medical services, are you able to get reimbursement from state or, or private insurance?
At this point, we are getting reimbursement from the state, from, for Medicaid, and are just launching into negotiating contracts with the commercial carriers.
Okay.
Good luck, good luck with that.
It's an uphill battle.
Yes, I know it has, good luck.
Uphill battle.
Anything else? If, anything, thank you very much for coming, appreciate it, thank you. Okay, Amplify, formerly Northern, North Central Region Mental Health, I apologize if I ruin your name, Marcia DeForre, Executive Director.
All right.
All right, see? Well, I'm done on a high note.
Actually, Marcia, but you're close. I've had my name butchered worse than that before.
Welcome very much, thank you. Welcome.
So thank you for having me. My name is Marcia DeForre, I'm the Executive Director of Amplify, formerly North Central Regional Mental Health Board. We are one of five Connecticut regional behavioral health action organizations, charged by the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, to act as their community partner for planning, education and advocacy to address the behavioral health needs of children and adults in your, your community. Our members include people in recovery, families, providers of behavioral health services, and members of coalitions that are concerned about mental wellness and preventing, treating and responding to substance misuse in our communities. So the purposes for our use of town funding include, are threefold. One is to ensure effective prevention initiatives, as well as quality treatment and support services are provided to Enfield residents, to identify local priority issues and resource needs, and to address gaps and barriers in the service system, and then to provide information about behavioral health services to the general public, so that people in need of services may be more likely to seek and have access to needed treatment and support services. Every year, we conduct a regional services priority review, using collected data, surveys, focus groups and interviews with people in recovery, family members, community behavioral health providers, and coalition members, for example, your local prevention council, led by Jean Howey, and local, other local referral organizations. We present those results to DEMUS, to state officials and to the legislature, and those reviews are used to set statewide priorities for the next state biennial budget, as well as federal resources that come to Connecticut. We also use those reviews to stimulate development of new and needed services, so, for example, information and advocacy to address critical issues such as opioid use overdose, suicide, vaping, problem gambling and substance misuse. So we're the fiduciary for federal funding for Enfield's Local Prevention Council, for their state opioid use disorder grant. We're also the fiduciary for next year's Local Prevention Council grant, focused on strategies to address vaping among our youth. And then we represent Enfield in the statewide rug and alcohol prevention task force, that's focused on prevention, treatment and recovery, support strategies to address addiction that is, addiction issues facing Enfield residents. We also want to address the root causes of addiction among Enfield youth, and so we've recently formed an anxiety work group to study and recommend strategies for addressing a growing emergence of anxiety among our school youth. In our last review, we highlighted the need for affordable housing with supportive services to Enfield residents, with mental health and addiction challenges, and we highlighted to the state disparities in our region, especially the lack of options for Enfield residents for affordable and supportive housing services. We're also concerned about services for older adults, and we're excited that you are creating a new position in your social services department, focusing on older adults, and look forward to working with that person. We have grant funding for identifying and providing education about ADA transportation resources for individuals with disabilities, older adults and veterans. Sometimes, we're highlighting the strengths of our local communities, and encouraging other parts of the state to learn from you. So, for example, in transforming and expanding Connecticut's Behavioral Health Crisis Response System, Enfield is really a leader in our region, and I've asked Jean Howey to share at an upcoming meeting about, of crisis responders, about how Enfield is working with their police, EMS, social services and the faith community, to respond as a caring community to residents in crisis. You really are a model in that area. And then we provide resources and information to the general public. I publish, I publish a weekly newsletter, highlighting educational and advocacy opportunities. We also promote mental health first aid, as a means of educating the general public about how to understand and respond to people with mental health issues, as well as a congregation-assisted program for problem substance use and gambling. Our funding request is always based on a seven cents per capita rate, so our request this year was for $3,125. I don't think Enfield has ever funded us at that level. We're grateful for what you are able to provide, but I do want to mention that we distribute over $12,000 in federal funds to Enfield, to, for addressing substance misuse in your And I want to thank you for supporting Amplify over the years, and your, the excellent resources that you provide to your community residents.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Counselor Sacala.
Thank you, thank you very much. Do you have, are you located in Enfield?
We're located, our office is in Hartford, we cover 37 towns, including Enfield.
Okay, and so how do you do the outreach in Enfield? Is it, I mean, do you come meet with people? Is it over the phone?
Both. So we have, we have, our region is divided into catchment area councils, and so, the catchment area council that serves Enfield actually meets in Enfield. We work very closely with the members of the Second Wind Clubhouse, people in recovery, who we think it's important for their voice and their influence to be heard at the state level, in terms of what's really needed for people who are struggling with mental health and addiction. So we meet with those folks, as well as we work very closely with your local prevention council.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Bosco.
I guess you answered one of my questions.
I know what you're going to answer.
But, the standard question that everyone's going to get asked.
Yeah, yeah. So I will have to get you that information.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just, do you get state funding, or is it federal and local?
Actually, it used to be state funding. The state actually eliminated all of our funding several years ago. We are now, we have federal funding from the DEMUS block grant.
So, so the state's considering expanding gambling in the state, legalizing marijuana, vaping, which, again, was supposed to cure the cigarette addiction, and yet, they cut your funding to be able to actually address those issues that we have to address with our citizens.
Right, so, I mean-
Makes a lot of sense.
So, you know, in all of our legislative advocacy, and we're at a lot of the hearings to talk with legislators, you know, our focus is, you know, some of these things you're going to do, because you want the revenue.
Right.
But if you don't reinvest that money in prevention and treatment services, you're just-
Right.
We know what's going to happen. So we will continue to advocate on those, on that level for this.
You guys lobby, does your organization lobby the state for some of the work that you do? So I'm just curious, you know, I mean, I think what you do is great, but you can see my point, right? I mean, they're legalizing all this stuff, and then we're going to make you have funding to actually deal with it. But they cut your funding to actually, to deal with it, you know?
Right.
So, I have to admit, I struggle a little bit with-
It's a conundrum, yes.
Right. I mean, I mean, do you guys take advocacy, you said advocacy, I mean, for example- You said advocacy, I mean, for example, council expenses in marijuana, would you guys, do you guys take positions on that, or you just simply deal with what you deal with?
So, I think the position that we'll take on marijuana is that, you know, we see it going forward, it's almost a train that's already passed the station, but what do you do to make sure that you keep people safe, given that? So, you know, what is the age that's legal? What protect, you know, what, you know, we can work with communities in terms of ordinances, you know, where are the places where people can purchase marijuana? What do you do about helping the police force to figure out what to do about intoxicated driving? I mean, there's all kinds of issues that have to be addressed, if indeed Connecticut is gonna pass legislation that legalizes marijuana.
All right. Great answer, appreciate it.
Counselor Spazza?
Just real quickly, one other thing you left out, you have to figure out how old the people are, how we're gonna regulate. How about if we don't legalize it? Would that solve the problem?
You know, I think it'd be great if we don't legalize it, but I think it's gonna happen.
Well, it might happen, but you know, I think the question is, when we legalize something for the sake of revenue, and I've heard from other mental health professionals here tonight, that it is a cause for concern.
It is.
I find it disingenuous, I guess, we'll leave it at that.
It is.
Counselor Bosco?
Absolutely. And you know, you will see me at public hearings, talking with folks about how best to handle this. I mean, we, we, we're not lobbyists.
Right.
We're a part of an organization that has a lobbyist, but we go to hearings as educators for legislators, and they do listen to us, but this is really a train that's left the station. It's how to keep people as safe as possible, given what's going forward, unfortunately.
Appreciate it. Counselor Bosco?
How many Enfield residents do you help?
So, you know, that's kind of a guarded question, because our purpose is to help all of your residents.
I understand.
Right. So, we don't provide direct services.
All I care about is people from Enfield, we're using Enfield money. I don't really care about Hartford, I don't care about East Windsor or any other town. I wanna know how many people from Enfield are actually getting help with Enfield taxpayer dollars. Like I says, I don't care about the rest of the state.
Right. No, but what I'm saying back to you is, because we don't provide direct services, our purpose is to provide services to your entire community. So, all of your residents, I believe, benefit from the kinds of services we provide to promote mental wellness and prevention of substance misuse.
So, you really don't have Enfield customers then, or clients?
We have, we have volunteer members from Enfield, but we don't have, we don't provide direct services. So, I'm not a counselor, I don't have counselors on my staff. I work with people who want to work as advocates, and I work with your coalition members.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, up next, I have the Community Health Center, Yvette Highsmith Francis, welcome.
Thank you, good evening, and...
Good evening, welcome, if the button's red, title, and the floor's yours, welcome.
It's red, it's mine. Good evening, I am Yvette Highsmith Francis, Regional Vice President with Community Health Center, Inc., and am before you tonight to say thank you for your support of our Mary Lou Strom Primary Care Center, right around the corner, where we provide comprehensive outpatient health services to our community's most vulnerable residents. Those comprehensive services include medical, dental, and behavioral health. More than 80%, about 82% of the patients that we see in the practice are living below 200% of the federal poverty level, and so are either uninsured or underinsured, and the support from the town has allowed us to provide care to individuals who have no insurance coverage, to make sure that they have access to the health services that they need. We take care of the entire family, so from infants to seniors, and really look to provide as much of the health services that folks need in one location. So, in addition to medical, dental, behavioral health, we also have chiropractic services, a podiatrist, a diabetes educator, and a registered dietitian. Because of the types of chronic health issues that our patients present with, those are the healthcare services that seem to be the most beneficial. Again, you know, the support of the town has really helped families that would not even be able to afford our sliding fee scale. So, we do have a sliding fee scale that, based on income and family size, can discount down to sometimes as low as $5, but believe it or not, some families do not have the resources to even pay that. And so, the town has really allowed for those individuals to not forego health services, because if our residents are not healthy, they will not be able to be gainfully employed, young people will not be engaged students in our school system, and it's just sort of a vicious cycle. So, we really appreciate the support as a federally qualified health center. So, we have met about 65 criterion from the federal government that says the Thompsonville area that we are located in is a medically underserved area, and so we are allowed to be there to meet that unmet need. One of the benefits of that is discounted pharmacy services. So, we were talking earlier about how challenging prescription costs are. So, for our patients, they are able to access, if they do not have any insurance coverage, medications at the government wholesale cost, because of our distinction as a federally qualified health center, and that has really made a huge difference in individuals and families not having to make the difficult financial choice about whether or not they're able to get medications. Another benefit of our practice is that we work really aggressively to make sure that everyone who presents as uninsured or underinsured sits down with our specialist for benefits, and actually goes through the Affordable Health Exchange process, because sometimes people are eligible for the expanded Medicaid, and they don't know it. Or they don't have a computer, or they don't have the confidence to kind of go through the health exchange and to identify that maybe there is a plan that they could afford. And so, we really work to make sure that anyone who doesn't have insurance coverage gets it, because our being able to waive down their cost, or, you know, using some support from the town to pay for those services, does not follow them to the pharmacy, doesn't follow them to a specialist, you know, and we want to make sure that families are covered.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Manjani?
Thank you. Thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you.
Just curiously, nothing else, you're looking for double of what you had last time, is there a reason for that? Is it increase in pricing?
No, increase in uninsured.
Oh.
Yes. And realizing, you know, we always do our best to make do with the dollars from the town, but did need to put our ask in, in terms of what we are seeing with the increase in uninsured. So, our uninsured patients last year increased by 8%.
Thank you.
Counselor Bosco?
Well, I got the two standard questions that I asked everybody.
Okay.
One is, do you know what you have in the bank compared to your operating budget? And if you don't, then you get it to them.
Sure.
Second, do you own a building, or do you rent a building?
So, we are currently leasing the building.
Okay.
So, we're right around the corner here.
Yeah, I know where you are.
We are looking for another location that I hope to own, but we are currently, we've been here since 2007, and we've been leasing that same space since then.
Now, again, I apologize ahead of time, because I don't want to sound like a jerk, but I thought we had this Affordable Care Act that was supposed to, everyone was supposed to be insured, and the state of Connecticut has their exchange where all these people are supposed to be insured, and why aren't they insured?
Cost? And so, if you don't...
I thought that if you couldn't afford it, you got it.
No, that's not true. You know, we do work to, as I stated earlier, I have, we call it an access to care specialist, which is an individual that really helps people go through that application process, and there are a good number of people who are eligible for the expanded Medicaid, but we also have lots of working poor who don't qualify for expanded Medicaid, but do not have the additional income to pay a $200 a month premium for one of those plans.
Well, the problem is, I know a lot of people that could afford it and just don't want it.
That's different, I don't see them.
And that's another part of the problem, is, oh, why do I need to get insurance? I'm healthy.
Yeah.
You know, so someone else can pay for me when I get sick.
So, we don't, we don't typically see that from our patients. I respect what you're saying, but that's not who we're seeing, we're really seeing people who just cannot afford it.
Thank you, if you can get that question...
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Moving on to Enfield Homefront Team of St. Raymond of Pennefort. I'm not even gonna try to ruin your last name. Robert Attaya. All right, look at that. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Mary Mersick, I'm with the Enfield Homefront Team, along with Babatea. We are board members on our Enfield Homefront Team, sorry, it's out of St., at Albert and St. Patrick's Church here in Enfield, and they do a lot to assist us, and I'll explain that in a moment. What is Homefront? If you're not aware, Homefront is a community-based, volunteer-driven home repair program. We provide free repairs to low-income homeowners, enabling them to remain in their homes with improved quality of life. The Homefront Organization is a regional nonprofit based out of Stamford, Connecticut, which assists us with low-cost materials, administration, and insurance for our projects. The Enfield Homefront Team, who we are, our board is comprised of around 10 local residents who volunteer their time to prepare for our one-day blitz of home repair every year. We are supported out of the parish of St. Raymond of Pennefort, which consists of St. Patrick and St. Albert's churches here in Thompsonville. Our volunteer roster is comprised of roughly 200 people from Enfield and surrounding communities. We've been working in Enfield for over 20 years, and each year have worked on no fewer than three projects, in some years as many as five, on the first Saturday in May each year. To date, we've completed projects to make the homes of 70 families warm, safe, and dry in the Enfield community. We're not doing extreme home makeover, some of you might be familiar with that, that's not what we're doing. Rather, we achieve quality of living repairs for people at no cost to approved homeowners. Beneficiary families are screened by the Homefront Organization for eligibility before we sign on to help them. They have to qualify as low-income and own the home, we don't work on rental units. We work with the Enfield Office of Community Development to identify Enfield residents' need, as well as partnering with them to help families who may have more need than our resources can help. How do we do this? We attempt to complete all of our work on the first Saturday in May every year. We're entirely volunteer-driven. Our volunteer teams are comprised of professional contractors who donate their time and talents, and usually tools, to help us. We're also very fortunate to have a large population of retired professionals, as well as a very large group of people who come out to help us to do whatever is asked, and provide the labor to get our projects done. It's really quite an amazing process. We also solicit local businesses, most notable is Marvin of Enfield, which was formerly A.W. Hastings over on Moody Road, and they have donated a large number of materials, as well as provided staff, that comprise one of our teams each year for the last 16 years. They've been very involved with us. What are our costs? Our costs are that we need to pledge $2,750 per home that we work on each year, and as I said before, we work on usually three homes a year, every year, and this fee, we pay to the Homefront Organization down in Stamford that I mentioned, and it covers the insurance for the volunteers that work on site that day, as well as giving us access to discounted construction materials for our projects. Our administrative costs are fairly minimal, they consist of paper for volunteer mailings and postage for those. We make every effort to get that money or items donated from local businesses that are willing, and additionally, the administrative staff at St. Raymond of Pennefort Parish help us out by collecting the mail for us, and also answering Enfielding phone calls on our behalf. And then the other administrative is that 10-member board that I mentioned, we do what we can, when we can. Additionally, we feed our volunteers on any given workday when they come out to work, we need to keep them upright. We usually, it consists of, you know, light breakfast, a lunch, and snacks, and beverages throughout the day. Again, we try to solicit that through donations, getting that food donated by local businesses, restaurants, but if we do not have the full amount in donations, we do need monies to purchase that, to make sure that these people are taken care of. And who is footing this bill? We are completely funded with donations and grants, and we've worked over the 20 years, we have done different things, we've solicited funds from local businesses and individuals through mail campaigns, just asking outright for donations. We've received proceeds from benefit concerts and special collections through St. Raymond of Pennefort Parish, and we have also received a number of different grants, and we have specific information on that in the past. But we really are here this evening, we believe that our goals, the Enfield Homefront Team, closely align with those of the Greater Together Community Funds and Social Services, in that we not only help the need in our community, but we bring community members together to meet that need. We form teams out of anyone who's willing to come on out and help us, and any monies granted to our organization will be used to foster teamwork and a sense of community, as well as improving the quality of life of those people in need in Enfield. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Bosco?
Well, I think I probably know what your answer's gonna be, but what do you have in the kitty compared to operating expenses? And I know you don't pay rent, but I gotta ask the same question to everyone, to be fair.
So, we currently, my name's Babatea, we currently have $6,000 to $7,000 in our kitty. We are required to make a pledge of $82, 75 for three sites, our goal was to try to get four. So, our savings to budget...
I, yeah, I guess now, you know, I mean, you have that money, so that's gone, so that leaves you with a couple hundred bucks, so that's why, I just wanna know what you've got for savings compared to operating, you know? You're probably in a negative right now.
We are in the negative right now.
But I'm asking everyone the same exact question, so if you could just, when you get it done, get it down to town manager's office, and...
Sure.
If it shows a negative, it's a negative. You know, I mean, you know what you had for expenses last year.
Yep.
Thank you.
Counselor Kiner, then Counselor Spazza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a disclaimer, I worked with this organization many years ago, and I think you made one error, you were talking about these volunteers. Many of these people are licensed trainsmen, they worked hard during the five days of the week, and they work on Saturday, but oftentimes, they don't finish their job, they do come back on Sunday, the following week, and you know, oftentimes, we talk about wanting to see this town, going back to the time when we were called the All-American Town, and this is certainly a step in the right direction. It's just absolutely heartwarming to see these men and women, oftentimes 100 or more, descending upon these three to five homes and make repairs, almost rebuilding the homes in some cases, and of course, that also is an attribute for the community itself. I also serve on the blight committee, and oftentimes, these houses are blighted, and you're certainly improving not only the home for that individual, but for the community as well, and I certainly, I for one appreciate all the work that you guys do, and just keep it up, and I hope that we can, we can help you guys. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Spazza?
Thank you. The $2,750 you have to pledge to the corporate office in Stamford, that's for the whole day, right? It's not per house, not per project?
It is per project on that day.
So, how many projects would you have on that day?
We generally do three to five, so this year we pledged three.
Twenty-seven fifty per home.
Correct.
Even if the repairs in that home are gonna take an hour and a half, and there's three guys, it's still twenty-seven?
We don't do, we don't do small projects, we spend the rest of the year trying to figure out projects that are extensive enough that we have the staff that can handle it, you know, we don't try to take too big a bite, but you know, as Mr. Kiner mentioned, sometimes there is stuff that goes beyond that one day, we try to get it completed in that one day, but these are generally very large projects, window replacement, roof repair, siding repair, any...
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Kiner?
Yeah, thank you, just one question. I seem to remember reading somewhere that, isn't there a program that you work in conjunction with veterans and Home Depot? Can you tell us a little more about how veterans are helped?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, this year, we're planning on doing three veteran sites. We've, Home Depot has a national-level grant that the Homefront based in Stamford applies for, and if they are awarded that, and we happen to be doing a veteran... And if they are awarded that, and we happen to be doing a veteran grant, then they basically can provide more material for that particular site. So, where we might be replacing three or four windows, but we'd really like to replace 12 or 15, the funds would become available, and we would allocate our resources accordingly.
Just curious, if we were to allocate money, would we be able to get some before-and-after pictures of what this accomplished?
Absolutely.
Yes, we have that. We just were told we aren't allowed to bring...
Right. So, having an average three to five houses in Enfield here? Just curious. I mean, what recent, any recent homes maybe? I don't know if you can say or not, but...
I would just say, if you Google Journal Inquirer with "Homefront"...
Yeah, okay.
There are, and we do have a Facebook page. The Enfield Homefront Team does have a Facebook page, and there are pictures of our projects. Sorry, there are pictures of our projects up on our Facebook page. And you can see, it's usually day of work and team photos onsite at each location.
And I'm assuming there's certain criteria for a homeowner to apply?
Yes, they have to meet a low-income level, and they have to be a homeowner. We don't do rentals, you know, or do, yeah. And they're extensively vetted through the Stamford Organization. That's the other thing that that organization gets us, is they do the review of the financials and make sure that this person is actually eligible.
Just curious, last question. So, the contractors, the volunteers, where, I mean, do you put that on your web? I mean, to show that some of those folks who do actually donate their time? I mean, do you actually put it somewhere on your website to highlight the names or the companies to help you out?
A lot of times, the individuals and the companies want to be on the QT.
I understand.
And so, we try to respect that. But I can say, I'm going to mention one, Tryano's, among others, that have been absolutely incredible.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. We're obviously well behind schedule, so we apologize. The general meeting is going to be a little late. Enfield Food Shelf. Kathleen. We're about, what, 20 minutes behind? We're going to blame the town manager on this. We're going to blame the town manager. For the record, for the record. Welcome. How you doing? Welcome.
Good morning. Good afternoon, everyone. There we go. Good evening, everyone. My name is Kathleen Souveney, and I'm the Executive Director for the Enfield Food Shelf, which is right over here at 96 Alden Avenue. I'm also an Enfield resident. I want to thank the town council for your service, because as much as I depend on volunteers, this town depends on all of you as well. This is a great opportunity for me to talk a little bit about the Enfield Food Shelf and its programs. I'm really honored to present alongside all these great organizations that have come up before me to talk about how we can focus on making Enfield a better place together. We are asking to continue your support for our rental assistance, as you have in the past, so we may maintain and expand our services. This is important, because in Hartford and Talon Counties alone, there are 127,000 people suffering from food insecurity. Based on data provided through the University of Connecticut, College of Agriculture and Natural Resources, Enfield falls in the bottom 25% of Connecticut towns for food security amongst its residents. This makes Enfield residents some of the highest-at-risk population in the state of Connecticut for food insecurity. Based on the federal poverty-level income brackets, there are an estimated 7,000 people here in Enfield who would qualify and/or could use some form of food assistance, excluding those in the ALIS category that you heard about earlier. So, let me tell you a little bit about Enfield Food Shelf, how we approach that. For the last 52 years, Enfield Food Shelf has been providing food assistance to Enfield families in need. In 2019, we served more than 2,100 registered Enfield residents just in our traditional weekly program. Many of you guys, thank you so much for coming and helping to serve. And then, across, many more that are across our other programs. And this need continues to grow. In the month of January alone, we registered 96 new shoppers for our weekly food assistance, which is all Enfield residents. In 2019, our Enfield Food Shelf volunteers worked more than 32,000 hours and successfully distributed the equivalent of 530,000 meals across all of our programs, partnerships, and collaborations. That's a 3% increase over 2018. Although that seems like a lot, when you look at the overall numbers, it's about 20%, if we were really going to alleviate hunger. In Enfield, you'd need about 2.9 million meals over the annual time. As times have changed and needs have grown, we've adjusted and expanded our programs and added partnerships and collaborations. As an organization, we have strive, we are striving toward a community in which everyone has access to nutritious food through a sustainable and collaborative distribution network. This network will also provide awareness to available programs, resources for assistance, and nutrition-based education. To fulfill this vision, we continue to enhance our weekly, monthly, and emergency food assistance programs. We maintain more than 16 partnerships and collaborations, helping to extend our food assistance network beyond our traditional weekly program. And we are always looking to provide more. An example of that would be, we provide Head Start with overages that we have for bread and things like that, which has been going very well. We provide home delivery for seniors who qualify in our monthly food assistance program. We make nutrition, health, insurance, housing resources available at each food distribution. We provide SNAP electronic signup at each food distribution. We help to build a healthier community by participating in local initiatives, such as the Enfield Hunger Action Team and 2GEN. We work to combat senior isolation with our new Enfield Friendly Caller Program. This is a new collaboration with the Commission on Aging and Enfield Social Services. We have a trained and licensed therapist, who is a volunteer of ours, who has trained volunteers to connect with our seniors here in Enfield by phone to provide them with resource information and a friendly voice on a weekly basis. So, we've been working with Cindy Guerrero to grow that program, and we're very excited about that. We provide a variety of opportunities for volunteers as well. I think that's something that gets overlooked a little bit. People are able to connect with others. They can gain work experience. They can get back on track with their community service. We have student interns that help to learn social services backgrounds. And all these people know that they, as an individual, can and do make a significant difference for their Enfield neighbors by making a donation of time and food and funds. We're working on a new, larger facility. The building is right in our parking lot, so it won't disrupt our clients too much. We're hoping to expand and make a more positive impact here as we continue to work with all these agencies to fulfill our vision of a food-secure community. We also help other organizations, such as the Warming Center, with different fundraising, joint fundraising. I do fundraising that I split with them to help them out as well, because I feel like there's a lot of things that need to fall into place to help the at-risk people here in Enfield. On behalf of everyone at the Enfield Food Shelf, I just wanted to thank the town council, as well as everyone in Enfield, for helping to provide us with such dedicated support over the last half-century. What we do would not be possible without you. And I totally agree with Mr. Kiner. This still is an All-American Town. The volunteer base is incredible and wonderful, and we really can get a lot done by working together. Please watch for information on our open house. We're actually moving forward on our construction of our new space, so we're very, very excited about that. Everyone is welcome to come, and we hope to see you there. And I look forward to addressing any questions you have. Mr. Bosco, we have voted that we have 18 months of reserves that we sustain at all times, so that we could keep going for 18 months if we needed to. And we are funded basically by fundraising events, direct fundraising, and grants that I write.
Thank you. Good, Counselor.
What is the, if you could just let the percentage? So, we know what you've got for capital.
Eighteen, well, we have 18 months of reserves.
Right. So, what does that equate to percentage of your operating budget?
One and a half times.
One and a half times.
Counselor Manjean.
I just want to say thank you. I have the privilege of serving on the board, and now I'm liaison. And I see the wonderful work that's being done.
Thank you.
You know, from the Food Shelf, servicing the people of Enfield. And it just amazes me every time I step in to see the positive results. So, thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Muller.
When are you moving? Well, we're hoping, we're just waiting for a couple of things to fall into place, but hopefully, we'll be starting our construction in March. I'm hoping to kind of have a soft opening in that June timeframe and a larger opening toward the end of the summer.
And you'll get rid of the old building? Or you rent that?
We will. We rent, by the way. We do, yes, yes, we do rent our facility. It's the same landlord, so, you know, he's helping to facilitate the move over there.
Any other questions? Well done. Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, apologize. The regular meeting still hasn't started. We are still going through the special meeting. We welcome the Network Against Domestic Abuse. Karen O'Connor, welcome. Thank you for hanging in there.
Thank you for having me.
I was going to suspend the rules and make you wait till the end of the meeting. Choking. Go right ahead, sorry.
Thank you for not. First of all, I just want to say it is my pleasure and honor to be sitting here representing the network. I want to introduce myself to you. I'm Karen Foley O'Connor. I've just retired being a state police sergeant for 25 years. Well, not a sergeant for 25, but 25 years of service to the state police. One of my passions while being a sworn officer was training police officers to respond to domestic violence incidents with trauma-informed compassion and working to help get our victims safe. State police and local police are now conducting lethality assessment tool at the scene of family violence, which sadly, in Connecticut, 51% of those screens come in as high-risk to be killed by their intimate partner. And that meets pretty in line with the national as well. Connecticut has 14 to 15 domestic violence homicides a year in the state. So, as a police officer coming to this position, the media will pick up on a few, but it's happening more often than we realize. And I come to the network with the hopes that we can keep our residents here in Enfield safe and get them to start safe, self-sustained lifestyles, free of domestic abuse. Okay? I'm going to apologize. Literally have been doing this job for two weeks. So, I can tell you, sir, that the answers to your questions, I'm going to have to get back to you. I'm just starting to wrap my head around the budget. We know we do have savings, but we look at the savings in the same way of how long we could survive. We do own Julie's Safe House in a children's center. That is our safe house, which is actually here in Enfield. And we also own the condo that we operate, our main office, here in Enfield. We have been in Enfield for 35 years, and our headquarters are here. I, what our goal here at the network is to provide safe, free-trauma-informed domestic violence services to Enfield residents who are victims of domestic abuse. And there are several ways that we do that. We have 24-hour Safe Connect service through CCATV, which is then filtered to our safe house to get victims and their families into safe, immediate housing. But once they get into that safe, immediate housing, the goals then turn into counseling, both individual and in-group on many levels, just not just domestic violence counseling for victims and their children, but it's also counseling to get them connected to resources in the state and here in the community, to get them out, to get them working, to get them permanent housing, and to get their families to a point where they're on their own in, out of the safe house. I was surprised when I arrived here to learn that our safe house, which is 15 beds, is 124% full. We have, on a regular basis, clients, victims, and families that we put in alternative housing at any given moment. That was, that was a kind of a surprise to me coming into town. We do serve, two-thirds of our victims that we serve come from the town of Enfield. Okay? So, it is our biggest, in our catchment, it's our biggest town. We also provide legal advocacy to victims in the courthouse, post-arrest and even pre-arrest, to get appropriate orders of protection from their abusers. And then, the big piece is the education. I know, again, I'm looking through, I have many grants that we go through in the network. Just to add that, we are funded by state and federal grants that are filtered through CCATV. It's about 60%. And then, the other 40 is donations, fundraisers, and grants that we apply for. And we do apply for many, and I'm just starting to wrap my head around that in my new position. But we apply education services to all Enfield students, both on the elementary level and at the high school level, to, about domestic violence, dating violence, how to deal with the stressors of domestic abuse and healthy relationships, how to deal with anger. And I could just give you some numbers that, last year, in 2019, we educated 4,575 Enfield students, educators, and coaches about preventing domestic abuse and healthy relationships. And we also housed 20 adults in Julie's house and 10 children. Now, the average stay in Julie's house is about 30 to 35 days, again, with the goal to get them out in a self-sustainable residency on their own. We do have people that stay longer, families that stay longer, and some that are shorter. Again, our goals are to provide immediate service to victims of domestic violence in Enfield for sustainable, self, safe and self-sufficient lives in the community, to be free of domestic abuse. As far as our services outside of Julie's house, we still provide the counseling, group, and individual, and again, assistance with, sometimes without the need for housing. And in 2019, we best benefited 375 Enfield victims and children. So, again, thank you. I noticed that last year, you guys did provide us with grant money. That grant money really plays a big role in us being able to train your stu, the youth of Enfield, which is where we want to start to begin a healthy relationship and hopefully, get a handle on domestic abuse. We did ask for slightly more this year. That reason is because we did notice that our population in Enfield is growing, and that was 40 more individuals than we helped in 2019. Thank you very much for letting me be here. Again, I'm honored and proud to be the Executive Director of something that I believe so passionately about, and I hope that you'll consider that. And I'll provide the information to your town, to, it was to your town manager? Yes. Tomorrow. Soon as I can get my, that I will.
Well, welcome to your new job.
Thank you so much.
And again, I think you, as long as everyone else, have done a very good job of advocating for your group. So, very well done. So, I have two quick questions. So, you mentioned sort of training. What about teaching of how to report it? So, so, you know, obviously, sometimes, I'm certainly no expert, but I know sometimes a lot of it goes unreported. And then, of course, it gets to a level that, you know, you have real, you know, you get to the, I mean, you know, those sort of things. And you mean training, you're also lookout, watch-out, those sort of things?
Absolutely. This training, the training is about, and I actually put this aside, because I knew you would ask me. It's about healthy relationships, teen dating violence, actually...
We're in the schools with this?
In the schools. Another big thing is, Enfield, the football team did sign on to Coaching Boys to Men, which is a program that we're trying to push statewide. It involves time, and as a coach myself, we teach these athletes to be aggressive. My kids all play hockey, and that's certainly a part of that. So, I'm a huge advocate of that. And I'm actually working with my community educator to look at some other national models of coaching women to be strong. So, we're trying to target that group. We're also, so we're training coaches. So, on the lower level, we're talking about health, meaning the elementary level, talking about healthy relationships, what to do with anger and how to manage anger, and in what to, when you need to talk about it, and how to tell, if you will. And then, at the high school level, we're really, really addressing dating violence and what to do in those circumstances, whether you're involved in it or you suspect it.
So, real quick, so, we had the, I'm going to ask about the grant where we got to prevent homelessness. Is this one of the things where there's a friendly handoff? If someone unfortunately gets into a situation where they may have to go to, you know, to the, to the safe house, but then eventually, we can hand them off to the program that, you know, works? Is that part of this as well? So, meaning that was part of the reason why we went for that grant, was to be able to do some of the things like that?
So, I'm not sure how, how...
You can talk to Cindy afterwards, because that's one of the, we've been, it's one of those things we've taught. We have a grant that we're actually helping people prevent homelessness, where, you know, again, some, this is obviously a situation where someone may lose their home because of domestic violence.
Obviously, situational homelessness is our priority. There also is a program, Rapid Rehousing. And interestingly enough, and I can't give you Enfield-specific, but interesting enough, the network is the second smallest... the network is the second smallest catchment of advocacy agencies in the state of Connecticut. And so far, our safe house has rap, utilized the Rapid Rehousing program the most in the state. So we really are getting people out there, and again, it's not, we're looking, the Rapid Rehousing is specifically to getting into something more permanent quicker, so.
Very good. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you hanging in there. Thank you. All right, now there was one. Regular meeting is still not ready, so we apologize for folks on TV. EFRC, please come up. ERFC, excuse me, I apologize, ERFC. And Claire Hall is the executive director, welcome. Just name and title, make sure the red light's on.
All right, I'm Claire Hall, Executive Director of Educational Resources for Children.
Welcome.
Also known as ERFC. And this is...
Thank you. Good evening. I'm David Meisels. I'm Director of Operations at ERFC.
Thank you for having us this evening. This evening, we're gonna talk to you because of your time also, strictly about what our grant is for our summer program called the Summer Escape Camp. In about four weeks, we'll be back here talking about our, all our services that we provide the Enfield community in a presentation in early April. Our Summer Escape Camp has been in operation since about 1995, and we service children from Enfield. All our, our families we serve are here in Enfield. We do invite other communities, if there's space in our program, for them to also join our program. We've been, we operate and serve for over, an average of over 125 children every summer, a week, every day. Children can enroll for one week or seven weeks. We run a seven-week program. We provide two different fee structures for families. We have a full-pay fee as well as a fee for a free and reduced lunch. That subsidized fee is where we're asking for assistance in this grant. We subsidize every year approximately 60% of the children we serve in the summer. For most of the students who come in the summer for, to us, from grades one to grades eight, to grade eight, are students that normally don't go to any other camps. They just, the families cannot afford the camps. The reason we exist is that parents really need us. They have to work. Many of our families are working one to two jobs, different shifts. So it allows us to serve families every day from 8:00 in the morning to 3:00, and then we have extended camp. So we open at 7:00 for working families, and we end at 6:00 for working families. So we provide a full day of services for Enfield families. Dave, you wanna tell about the, what happens in Enfield?
Yeah, sure. Summer Escape Day Camp is recreational, also, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Better? There we go. Summer Escape Day Camp is a recreational summer program with a significant academic and educational enrichment component to it. So in addition to sports, arts and crafts, performing arts, there's a dedicated digital media program that will involve robotics, coding, film creation, music creation, all through computer. We'll do a dedicated science program and a literacy component all the way through. In doing so, we help to address what could be learning loss over the course of the summer. Of course, we partner with the school district during the year, providing before and after school, and we feel it's, it's part of our mission to make sure that students are coming back to school at the beginning of the year, ready to go, having, having enriched themselves through the camp programs over the course of the summer.
You're done? Okay. I'll take it back. One thing we do do, again, addressing the, the summer learning loss is, can you hear me? Because I can't hear me.
Yeah, you're hearing me.
Okay, oh, good. Is, is really look at, what do the kids work with during the school year? We know because we work with over 300 kids that, we know where they're coming from in the summer. Many of the students who enroll this summer are already, already parts of our, part of our program during the school year. So it gives us an opportunity, like Dave said, to continue the learning in total disguise because summer camp is really fun. And that gives us a chance to, to reach on some of those math activities, those reading activities, and keep kids learning in that way. Summer program also gives an opportunities for families to come together. We do family engagement activities every single week, and we get a really good call for that. Parents really try to work on their schedules to be there on those, on those Fridays. And it's an opportunity for them, again, to be part of the whole family and work together.
Any questions?
Questions.
Counselor Bosco and Counselor Mangini.
No, we don't have any reserves, and we own nothing.
So, yeah. So I'd like to know, the same question I asked everybody else, and the same thing with property. The only other question I got is, you're looking for this, this $15,000 for this summer camp.
Mm-hmm.
At the end of summer camp, do you run a deficit?
No, we usually make our, we make our, we usually make our budget. Our budget has been pretty well leveled. We don't serve more kids every year. We haven't been able to for about three years, so we have, we keep our budget as fairly level. There's never anything left over. We subsidize, if there's any money left over in budget that we're projecting, we use it to subsidize our families.
But that, that's, that's fine, but I'm just saying, you know, is this like a, a loss to you?
No, we are break-even to us. We look to break-even every year to start the year. It's, it's a difficult program to make money on because we, we are also a licensed camp, which means we have a lot of mandates from the state in order to keep our license. We have to, we have a one to 10, one to 12 in the summer ratio with staff, so a lot of it goes to staffing in order to, to operate.
Yeah, the, the license aspect of it is, is a real benefit for the kids, too. All of our staff are CPR first aid trained. They are all trained to handle medication and medication-related issues. They're all mandated DCF reporters, and our staff is college age and up, really through retiree age. We have counselor in trainings. These are our high school students, mostly from Enfield High School, who will participate at no cost and work their way into potentially the youth development field if, if that's where they want to head.
So, do you, during this summer period, do you have to hire more staff to, to do this? Does your staffing go up considerable, or are you using staff that you have all through the year?
We're fortunate. Our staff continues and grows with us in the summer, which is very, we think we retain about only 85% of the staff stays with us through summer. Some of our staff go on to college or higher education, even in master's degrees. Some of them work, let's see, most of our staff, we have, do have some student, college interns who will come and assist with us.
DPS, Paris.
Enfield Public School, yes, certified teachers, high school, Paris, Paris will work in the Enfield schools. We have a variety of different people, and they follow us, and hopefully they'll still be with us for the start of the new year.
I guess where I was going is, if, if you didn't have this program, you know, is, is half of your staff from the babysitting during the day through this program, or is this all more or less new staff you need to hire to run this program?
Okay, first of all, we don't babysit, so we can make that clear. What we do is...
My wife said that, too, when I used to have to watch my kids.
Really? Well, we provide the educational activities and enrichment activities, so babysitting, the staff doesn't come to babysit. Most of these are trained to work, as, very much like Paris, are trained to assist in, in different team leaders. If we didn't have the program, these people would not have jobs in the summer, because many of them are part-time and they're working with other parts.
That's, that's my, that was my question.
Absolutely. They would, they would lose their jobs. And most of our employees are from Enfield, so, yeah.
Counselor Mangini.
Thank you. Thank you for your program. As you know, I know firsthand the value of this program. As a backup grandma, I've had the privilege of taking advantage of this program. There is no babysitting. There, there is nothing to do with babysitting. But I think also what people need to understand is the value of the program. The fact that without your program, many children won't fit into other programs because there's no room or too costly. And in addition, many of these children will be left home unattended, and that's a fact. And I, I know, you know, firsthand, of course, that's illegal, it's wrong, but there are parents that have no choice. So those children will be unsafe. And through your program, you provide not only the safety of, for the children, you also provide not only recreation, you, you provide the ability for these children to grow, mature, develop, socialize, and it's wonderful. And I can't thank you enough for that, and I would always support your program.
Thank you. It is a good point that we need to address, is that a lot of children take care of younger children in this town. We work very hard in our case management work to really meet with families and let them know the opportunities that are available and have them take advantage of it. It's usually the older students that'll come to us and say, "I want to come to camp, but I have to take care of the four-year-old and the two-year-old so mom can work." So it does fit that, that group for sure that needs it. It also does keep kids very safe. The program started years ago because there was no program, and there were kids out on the street, and that was when the program first started in 1994 through the St., then St. Andrews Church.
On the lawn.
Yes, we, I know, it's been a long time, so.
So I was just curious, though, we do have a program now, we have the Tons for Fund, that the town funds.
Yes.
So I, I think people gotta realize, we also do fund our own program. How's that compete with your program? So I'm saying, from the perspective, I mean, the taxpayers are funding a full program, you know, through what's called Tons for Fund. So I just want people to realize that the town is actually providing a program as well.
Sure. I don't feel like we've ever competed with them. They, they fill up, and we fill up, and I said, that says it's a need. We've never had that happen for us anyways. It's been, it fills up very quickly. It operates for a full seven weeks, and we even operate a program when school ends called Vacation Destination to Bridge to the Summer Program. So it has not been a, a matter of compromise or competition for us.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate you being patient. Thank you. All right. Unfortunately, there's gonna be no recess. We're going right into the, sorry, we gotta go right into the regular meeting. It is 10 of 8, 7:50. We apologize, folks. The regular meeting now will begin of Monday, March 2nd, 2020. Prayer, Counselor Mueller.
Dear Lord, once again, we are here tonight to work on behalf of the residents of Enfield. As we approach the issues on the agenda tonight, may we be mindful of how our decisions affect all who call Enfield their home. We realize that we that sit on the council may not always agree on every issue before us, but may we always disagree kindly and with respect for others' opinion. Give us wisdom, understanding and compassion as we serve our community. We ask this in Lord's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, any regular agenda roll call, please.
Counselor Mueller.
Here.
Counselor Sforza.
Here.
Counselor Ungar.
Here.
Counselor Bosco.
Here.
Counselor Sacala.
Here.
Counselor Hamler.
Here.
Counselor Kiner.
Here.
Mayor Ludwig.
Here.
Counselor Mangini.
Here.
There are nine present, two absent.
Moving on to item four, the fire evacuation announcement. Just in case of a fire, we do have an exit in the, in the back of the room. Please move orderly through, either left or right, out the doors and out into the parking lot. We also have doors to our left, to the audience right. Go through the doors, through the first doors that you see when you encounter going in the hall. Go down the stairs, out the sliding doors and into the parking lot in an orderly fashion in case of a fire. Moving on to item five, the minutes of preceding meetings. Do I have a motion to approve special meeting, February 18th, 2020?
So moved.
By Counselor Mangini, second by Counselor Mueller. Is there any additions, deletions, corrections, omissions? Hearing none by show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed, abstention? Eight in favor, zero against? Moving on to the regular meeting, February 18th, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve? Counselor Mueller, second by Counselor Mangini. Is there any additions, deletions or corrections? Hearing none by show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions, eight in favor, zero against? Moving on to our special guests, item six, the register of voters. Welcome, how you doing, Lou?
Good evening, everybody.
Welcome, Tom. Name and title for the record when you, and the lights on, for yours, gentlemen.
Tom Kinsler, Republican Register of Voters, 359 Washington Road, Enfield, Connecticut.
Louis Fiori, Democratic Register of Voters, 14 Cardio Road, Enfield, Connecticut.
Welcome.
Before we start, does everyone have our talking points?
I don't believe so.
Pass them out?
Yep. Well, thank you for having us today. I just want to start off while Lou is passing those out. We appreciate you inviting us to tonight's meeting to help us get through our proposal. And on a side note, I want to thank all of you. Really appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing and the results that you're getting. It's, it's really noticeable, so thank you. We came before you tonight because, as you know, as JFK renovations are about to take place in May, our April 28th primary, presidential primary, will be our last JFK polling location until the school is completed, approximately two and a half to three years from today. And we will need to move that polling location that currently is at JFK to an auxiliary site. We've, Lou and I have worked tirelessly together to come up with and options for new locations, including other schools, private enterprises and other town buildings. And we've come to you tonight because we are going to recommend that the council approve that the senior center be our election polling location for the next few years until JFK is ready to go. Before I give it over to Lou, who has some of the detailed information on this, our first venture was to try to continue at JFK because moving 6,600 registered voters to a different location is a, is a task in and of itself and an inconvenience in many respects. However, after working with the building committee and several other folks in town, it became clear that we weren't going to be able to guarantee, without disrupting the renovation of the school, that we could do that. So we were, we came to the decision that we absolutely had to move. And Lou is gonna go over a few of the points on that, but if you're, for your consideration.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. First of all, we should also mention, I don't know if Tom did, sorry if I missed it, that we have met with staff, we have met with the Director of Public Libraries, who's responsible for the senior center, and Mary Keller. We met with other people, staff. We've also met with the town manager, assistant town manager, and with the superintendent of schools. So this was not done in a vacuum. No matter what recommendation we make, we, we know that there's going to be some pain either way. But I wanted to go through some of the scenarios, because one of the things we wanted to do tonight was also make sure that the community knew the due diligence that Tom and I and others have taken in this recommendation. We want to make sure everyone understands this was not done lightly or in a vacuum without a lot of input and a lot of study. So I wanted to go through these things very quickly with you, with the talking points you have in front of you. And again, I'm gonna read these if you don't mind, because again, part of our object for being here tonight was hoping that the public would understand why we're making this recommendation also. Because like us, you're going to be getting some phone calls also, so we want to make sure you're prepared for this.
And just as a side, before Lou does that, in, in speaking with the senior center and in going through what, what impacts that will have, we've created a, we're, we're gonna have one night, the day before the election and the day of the election interruptions in the location over the next three years. So basically, we're talking about six to nine days in the next three years where they'll have to make some changes to accommodate the election, but the disruption will be very minimal.
So the first thing I'd like to talk about very quickly is, and I'm just gonna basically read here, and then all this and open up to any questions or concerns that you have, and why we've chosen the recommendation for the senior center. Even though this location is out of District 1, it is possibly the only public location that can accommodate a maximum of 6,400 voters that we are not already using. It is located on a main thruway. There are over 100 parking spaces. It has two large rooms that can accommodate all the voting needs and suburb outdoor lighting in the parking lot. It also supports, it can also support non-scheduled special elections. Our intent is to allow the town employees access through the side entrance throughout the day and to also allow for the Meals on Wheels program to continue to operate. Having elections at this location will also have a bonus effect of exposing the senior center to a lot of people who have never been in that building. Having been on the original building committee for the senior center... Having been on the original building committee for the senior center, I know that this building can't support our needs. The negatives, because there are always some negatives, we want to make you fully aware and the town manager. It's out of the district. Basically, it is out of district. The senior center is not in District 1, it's in District 3. No senior center programs the night before or on Election Day can occur. We basically, we take over the senior center from around 5:00 the night before till 10:00 the next night when the election's over. The Department of Public Works Building and Ground staff will have to transport our election equipment from the old Pickens Library over to the senior center before and after every election. Again, right now, we store it at JFK in a closet. We're not going to have that availability in the senior center, so we're going to have to off-storage that. So we'll need some additional DPW support. In addition to that, we're going to have to have a custodian there a little longer than normal during the days. We don't want to be responsible in that building without a custodian there all day during the election. Someone's going to have to open the building, someone's going to have to close the building. And those are basically the only negatives, other than inconvenience to the seniors, of course, on Election Day. So I have a couple of things I want to cover. Why not move Enfield High? Well, some of the reasons why we didn't move back there was because we didn't move back there when the building first opened up after they had the renovations. If you notice, we stayed at Enfield Street School. And the reason being is that the entrance is in the back of the gym, which makes it very convenient for a lot of voters. 25% of the parking in Enfield High in back of the gym, because we were not going to be allowed access through the front using the elevator, we're not, they're not going to give us access to that, is parking within a 75-foot radius. It's also out of district. There would be much confusion with some people in District 2 voting in Enfield Street School and then those new people in District 1 voting in Enfield High School. I mean, you guys are candidates.
200 feet down the road.
Down the road, you can imagine that confusion on Election Day. That wouldn't be pretty. And we have some of the same issues when the school is in session. The school is in session, there's even less parking, we weren't going to have any access through the front. So that's one of the reasons why we ruled out Enfield High School. And in addition, we shouldn't combine District 1 and District 2 in the same voting location. We looked at that. Why don't we move Enfield Street School and the JFK people into the Enfield High School? Because the gym is big enough, we could do that. But there's definitely not enough parking for over 10,000 voters. Okay? So that, rule that out. And another thing I should mention is, we also have met with Gary Harrison, who's the Safety Director for the public schools, so he's fully briefed on all of this also. Okay, why not Parkman and Whitney Schools? Split the 58th and go into one and 59th and together. Pretty similar to the way we used to have it, when we used to have eight or nine polling places. Well, we have a problem when schools are in session. I mean, basically, this isn't like when I was heavily involved and we were able to use the schools. This is, you know, schools are much more locked down now. We have issues even with Barnard and Enfield Street School using that. It's just not the way to go anymore to use the schools. It's just very cumbersome for us when schools are in session to vote there now versus the old days. Now, the gym location makes the parking at Whitney very difficult, if not impossible. You can't access that gym through the front. They're not going to let us go through the front of the building, walk all the way down to the gym in the back. People would have to go through that side entrance and park in the back. It just was not conducive to what we wanted to. Whitney is also out of district. And also, in order for us to split into two, 58th going to one and 59th going to the other, we have to have additional election workers, and we'd have to buy additional software, which would basically bring our costs up about $4,000 more in an election. And we'd have less backup election equipment to be able to use in case we ever had a problem. So that's why we ruled that out. And another thing I should mention on these negatives, all of these negatives are part of our disaster recovery plan. So all of these places I'm mentioning, why we decided not to recommend them to you, we certainly use them if we had an emergency. We didn't consider this an emergency. This is a planned outage, and we have plenty of time to find a conducive location. An emergency is, there was a fire at one of the buildings the night before, or a pipe broke, or something else like that, and we have to use one of these locations. We'll make anything work for one location.
The other piece to that is that the number-one goal of this exercise is to create the easiest, best flow for voting for our citizens. And to make it, whether it's ADA compliant, parking, convenience to get in and out, intermingling with the school while it's open, that type of thing, it's the best choice for ease of voting for our voters.
We also looked at why not voting at Parkman alone? We've heard that from people saying, "Why can't you just move everybody over to Parkman?" Well, this location can't support 6,400 voters. The last time we used Parkman, it was a split, District 1 was split. 58th was in one location, 59th is another. To ask 6,400 voters max to go in one location just is not feasible, especially when the school's in session. And some of our election schools in session, like the one on April 28. Parking is very limited. And we would have some of the same issues at that location as we have at Barnard and Enfield Street School. It's just they can't handle that amount of voters. And then we considered some other options. We considered looking at the old Nathan Hale School. That's kind of going vacant out there. Again, that's out of district, and basically, we thought that was excessive travel time from the far reaches of District 1 for people to go all the way out to Nathan Hale. Church facilities, not desirable in a non-emergency situation. That's all I want to mention about that. I think we all can mention the graduation fiasco, so we weren't going there looking at churches. In an emergency, if a church volunteered or suffered an emergency the night before an election, you're darn right we'd take it. But not when we have a planned structured outage that we should be able to plan for. Town Hall, Annex, the old Fermi High School. We decided, again, we shouldn't combine District 1 and District 3 at that location, as, think about it, we'd have 12,500 voters having to vote at one location. Just not practical. The gym could hold it, but the parking can't. And then private building location, like trying to rent the old Macy's. Or South Road, or the Crick High School, which we consider, you know, just like a private, you know, Crick is a private entity. Again, they don't really work out for us. We would require a lease agreement. Are they going to let us access the night before with our own DPW workers? Are they going to allow our DPW workers on site? Are they going to allow our IT staff on site to be able to hook up our equipment? What kind of guarantee are they going to give us that our workers are safe? And we'd have to do a lease agreement through the town manager's office, and they'd have to guarantee that we'd have to be able to use that for two and a half years.
One other point on that is that imagine having to notify 6,400 voters that your polling location has changed, and then next election, because of the company that had that facility leased to someone new, which is obviously what they're trying to do, if the space is open and it's available, and now the new tenant is in there, and now we have to put out another 6,400 notifications that your polling place is changing again, and we may do it another time. So that just made it untenable for the public, remembering the last time we consolidated polling locations, how difficult that was that first time for the public. Where am I voting? Where am I supposed to go? I didn't get a card, you know, that type of thing.
So again, I'd just like to highlight the highlights on your cover letter. I hope you have that in your packet along with the resolution. The Redshire Voters must leave the JFK Middle School voting location due to construction beginning on April 30, 2020. So again, if anyone's listening, the primary will be held at JFK. We are not moving until after the April 28 primary. Redshire Voters has conducted a research and have deemed it that the best alternative site is the use of the senior center during the time that the middle school is unavailable, approximately two and a half years. There's a chance we could possibly get in there for that, back in there for that November 2022 election, which is the gubernatorial election. But in the back of our minds, we're, you know, okay, if we can get in there, that's great. If we're not, we're not. We should be able to get in after that. If our proposal is accepted, then the senior center must close and cease all activities except for the senior center employees and the Meals on Wheels program during the election events. Again, as Tom already mentioned, that's just one night, which apparently don't have activities on Monday night, and it would be on the very selected elections on Tuesdays. And those dates are Tuesday, August 11, 2020, Tuesday, November 3, 2020, Tuesday, September 14, 2021, Tuesday, November 2, 2021, Tuesday, August 2, 2022, and possibly Tuesday, November 1, 2022. Very selective dates. The senior center will be used by the Redshire Voters beginning at 5:00 p.m. the night before each election event. Redshire Voters, we have met, as I already mentioned, with the Director of Public Libraries to ensure that a smooth transition will occur and answer any questions they had or concerns. By state statute, we will send notifications to all the active District 1 voters informing them of the voting location change, and I'd like to address that fairly quickly. We're going to be doing a mailing to the 6,400 voters. Number one. Number two, of course, that website will be changed and information. We're going to ask each, both political parties or any other political party who want to join us to put that on their Facebook page for information. We've met with the superintendent of schools, who's going to actually do a robo-call, unlike the towns' robo, who can't do that. He can do informational robos, so he volunteered to do that once or twice before each election to remind people that their voting location has changed. So again, we've pretty much thought pretty well through about notifying the people to the best of our ability. There is no budget impact with this recommendation, other than everything else is in our budget. Last year, in this current budget, we did budget already for the mailing, so that's already in our budget. So basically, that's kind of it. I think we'll entertain any questions.
Before that, though, you know, I want you, I'd like you all to just to take a moment and think about the advantage of 6,400 people coming into the senior center over the next couple of years for the first time and getting to see, getting to read the things that are going on there, getting to see the facility and its magnificence, and that have never been there before. So I see that as the upside to this move, is that it's really going to end up helping the senior center. Did you have any questions?
Any questions? Councilman Mangini, then Councilor Bosco.
Thank you for your presentation. Just one question. Are you looking for a resolution from the council or?
Yes, there is one in your packet.
Oh, okay, okay. So that would cover?
That would cover it.
That would cover it, because there is no budgetary.
Correct, yeah. It's just the move itself.
And that resolution, that resolution makes it official.
Yeah.
And also, we would send a copy of that resolution over to the Secretary of State's office to notify them. And one of the reasons why we're doing that, Councilman Mangini, is not so much for District 1, local municipality, but it's because we're affecting the two-state, District 1, 59th and 58th.
That's right, that's right.
So again, we're covering all the bases by making sure the Secretary of State's office informed also of that move.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Bosco.
Boy, both of you guys sound like politicians, making something sound bad, make it look good, Tom, with your little speech. You know, I don't like it, but we don't have a choice, and everything you said makes sense. So of course, I'm going to support it, but I also would think maybe we should add it to our ticker on ETV. So it just keeps running that, you know, for the next election or the election, it's going to be moved. So that'll give people plenty of time who watch ETV, who read that ticker, that it's going to be moved, because it's going to be a nightmare.
That's a good point, Joe, and we've come, also, we're going to come to a few meetings for public communication purposes, not for special guests, but, you know, we'll keep it out there on ETV through our comments and, you know, here and at future meetings.
And plenty of signage before you pull into JFK's parking lot, because, you know, people are going to want to pull in there, and they're going to, they're not going to be happy. And, you know, I mean, there's not much we can do, but at least you guys thought it out. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Joey took my suggestion about putting on ETV. Just curious when the mailing is going to go out?
Our plan is to send out the mass mailing in August, right?
No, no, it'll be late May.
Late May?
Late May.
After the primary.
After the primary.
Again, we want to, for anyone that's listening, I'm not even sure, is this on TV?
Yes.
Again, this change does not take effect until after the April 28 presidential primary, if anyone's watching. I mean, if I can, just, if I can take one more second, I know you've had a long day, a long night.
Lou, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. I would like to make a plug about April 28, if I can take this opportunity. Again, we have the April 28 presidential primary. I just want to remind the citizens of the town of Enfield, by state law, that is only for Democrats and Republicans. Only Democrats can vote for Republican candidates, Republicans can vote for Republican candidates, unaffiliates.
Well, you want to rephrase that?
Yeah, or did I backwards? Oh, I'm sorry.
Only Democrats can vote for Democrat primary candidates, and only Republicans can vote for Republican candidates. And this year, this year, we just found out in the last few.
I like Lou's explanation much better.
Do you like that?
My mind was moving faster than I was talking.
But this, we just found out a few weeks ago that there will be a primary, is it Bill Weld is going to primary Trump in the state of Connecticut? That was just announced. So that where people thought it was just going to be the Democrats primarying, it's actually both parties primarying. So all of you, please come out and vote.
And also, unaffiliates cannot participate, nor can libertarians, nor people of the Green Party. Unaffiliates can register as a Democrat or a Republican up to about a couple of days before the primary. If you're a Libertarian or Independent or a Green Party member, you've missed the opportunity to register to vote for this primary.
So one more time, if you're unaffiliated.
Affiliated, you can register to be a Democrat or a Republican and vote in the primary. You have up to about a couple, maybe that Friday before the April 28 primary.
So very important, because this town has an enormous number, enormous number of unaffiliated classed voters. So for the public at home, please check what your affiliation is, because we do get some people come in and say, "I thought I was this," or "I thought I was that," and they're unaffiliated. If you have not selected one at the Registry of Motor Vehicles, perhaps, when you were in there making, filling out that form, you will be put into the, you were put into the unaffiliated category, which means you're not eligible to vote unless you change to a Republican or a Democrat for this coming primary. So those of you at home, as Lou said, up till, we'll say, the Friday before the election, you can change to one of those two parties and participate in the primary. If you don't, you're eligible to vote in the normal, regular election in November, no matter what your party is, to vote for whoever you'd like. But in a primary, you must be a member of that party to vote in that primary. Anyone ask questions? They're welcome to call the Register of Voters office.
Two other things, very quickly. One, there is no election day registration for primaries in the state of Connecticut, so it's called EDR, same-day registration. So we just want to make people aware of that. You can't come down to Town Hall on primary day and register to vote, and unfortunately, they don't, we don't support that for primaries. And again, if you normally vote at the Town Annex Fermi, that's where you'd be voting. If you normally vote at Henry Barnard, that's where you're voting. If you normally vote at JFK, that's where you'll be voting. If you normally vote at Enfield Street School, that's where you'll be voting. But at Enfield Street School, because school's in session, you will have to go around to the back of the building. We will not be voting in front of the building for this April 28 election. All right? And school is in session, so parking will be challenging.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
Very thorough. Thank you.
It's good to see everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hope you get a chance to take a five-minute recess.
Moving on to item seven, public communications. Ask the public, anyone from the public like to speak for the council? We ask that you please refrain from personalities, and of course, you're an Enfield resident. Anyone else like to speak for the council this time? Mr. Young.
George Young, 8 Holly Lane, Enfield, Connecticut. Although I was not at the last meeting, in February, I was eventually able to watch it at home. I must say that everyone looked very impressive with the new background and the foreground in this room. room. I would suggest a second speaker, or microphone, I mean, for a second speaker, because it seems very awkward when you watch it, to watch this thing going back and forth like a ping-pong game. So, just this suggestion. Last month, I thought Councilor Srazza did a great job and has continued support of the Enfield police force. I'm sure Enfield is having problems similar to our neighbors to recruit and keep the best persons available. It is a dangerous job, and in the past few years, I see the same lack of respect for them that I saw in the '60s when servicemen did not wear their uniforms in public due to the negativity of the wars. Start at home and bring some of this respect back. This past week, we saw at least two incidents where the police performed exceedingly well. One was the drug bust, and the second was subduing an unruly, out-of-control student at the high school. No person should strike a police officer, and when they do, I feel they lose many of their rights. I'm sure we'll be hearing more of this soon, and I hope that the officer is supported for his appropriate actions. At the February 18th meeting, it was very informative that the Assessors' Office and the Finance Director spoke about the tax credit for the elderly and the disabled to reduce their real estate taxes. I have been advocating for that, for that. One of the councilors contacted our legislators and representatives to get the state to reinstate their share of this program for a long time now. I was glad to hear that Councilor Riley, a Republican, took the initiative to do this part, but I would hope that more councilors, especially the Democratic councilors, since the state is predominantly democratically controlled, who would follow her lead, that they listened to the presentation at the last meeting. We need the state to support the program they mandated. In addition, I would also suggest that a copy be sent to Ms. Melissa McCaw, M-C-A-W, Secretary of the OPM, as she is the Connecticut Budget Chief. It would be important to get her support to get the funds, which appear in the governor's budget this year, as Property Tax Relief Elderly Freeze Program. Maybe on the town's tax bill, it should read, as somebody suggested, a change in the wording to give, to not give recognition to the state. The words could be changed from elderly state benefit to additional town benefits. The seniors are appreciative of the council's willingness to pay the state's portion of this benefit. It is also really good that the biennial application process has been simplified by the Assessors' Office by populating the forms with information that they have on file. As John and Della mentioned, the Office of Policy and Management, OPM, sets the rules for this benefit. OPM publishes a question-and-answer booklet for the program each January, which is retroactive to October 1st of the prior year. More than a year ago, they stated that a resident that holds their home in a revocable trust would not be eligible for the credit, but if it was held in an irrevocable trust, their property would be eligible for the credit, providing all the criteria was met. Very briefly, a revocable trust would allow the owner to change the beneficiaries without the permission of the current beneficiaries. In an irrevocable trust, the owner would only be able to change the beneficiaries with the permission of the current beneficiaries. You can think of your own examples of these two scenarios. Many seniors put their assets in trusts at this time in their life. Although it was not mentioned in the council minutes, it is important to note that, as Ms. Froman stated at the last meeting, if you have an irrevocable trust, you might be eligible this year, which I believe you would have also been eligible last year if you met the other criteria. Now, we come to the January 2020, and a new question-and-answer booklet has been released. Since I don't have time to discuss it now, I'll wait until my next few minutes. Thank you.
Forty seconds left, still. You sure? Okay. Anyone else like to speak for the council this time?
Sir.
Welcome. Name and address, please. Thank you.
Sure.
On the mic here?
Yeah.
Oh, hi.
Is it on red?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name's Nick Hopkins. I live at 29 Bigelow Avenue here in town. I recently moved here from Illinois, actually, last year, and I really like the town and all the residents I've spoken with. I also currently work as an attorney in Hartford. I came out tonight because I had some concerns and also a question relating to that recent incident at Enfield High School that the prior public commentator mentioned. My question is this, and offered generally, do we want to treat our children here like criminals for engaging in the kind of messy behaviors and mistakes that come with adolescents? I think that's something that everyone should think about. But my concerns stem from my time in Illinois. Prior to becoming an attorney, I worked at a residential psychiatric center for kids, and they taught us restraint techniques and also best practices for de-escalation. Unfortunately, observing the video of the incident, I really don't think that best practices were observed. This is best practices for the disciplines of psychology and education. I think there was some risk in taking that kid down. I think this does present an opportunity for Enfield to think about implementing some of those best practices in school, relating to school resource officers. They, the scholarship exists, and I'd be happy to do some looking for you all if you're interested. But another question, the final one, is do we want school resource officers intervening in that way, because it does present some risk to students? It does present some risk to the officers, and I think it criminalizes the kind of behaviors that really, in the past, have been dealt with effectively by student administration. So I thank you all for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for the council this time? Anyone else for the first time? Bob?
My name's Joe White. I can't remember. I'm Phil Biden. I'm for US Senate. I would've passed it out earlier, but you guys were busy.
No worries. Take this bow.
Bill, I appreciate the thought. I'll remember that.
Welcome.
Just put a, the odd, Bob T. Cats.
Bob, just put the mic on. You're good go, sir.
Bob T. Cats, 815 Gate Circle.
Thank you, sir.
What I passed out was a services that the Shelton Police Department provides. I'd like to see one for what Enfield provides. I do have some problems with the numbers, serving 70,000 people. That number's pretty bogus. It's like the six-
You got another one?
Yeah. It's like the 60,000 that former police chief said that was Enfield. That number was probably real at one time, but it's not. Shelton operates their town, and they only charge the taxpayers 22 mils. They have their own fire district, four fire stations, volunteer fire department, EMS. They don't charge a fire tax. 2016, there were 22 mils. We were 31 mils. Pretty much the differential that should be looked at. But as far as I'm concerned, as far as budgeting, there's no such thing as fixed cost in anything, and there's no such thing as mandates. And I'm gonna give you an example of a mandate. Shelton buys their own school buses. If you have a contract with a school bus company, you're required to have seats for every student that's enrolled in the schools. If you have your own school buses, you don't have to do that. You can have a walking area to the schools. Shelton does that, and they save, over the years, millions of dollars. That's one reason why their mil rate is low. Now, I did a little studying on, trying to figure out where the 60,000 come in. There's an organization that's under the Census Bureau called the Longitudle Employees Household Dynamics, and they use the acronym LEHD. And, for instance, Wallingford. The people that come into Wallingford is 21,000, but the people that go out to work in Wallingford are 18,000. 5,000 work, work in Wallingford that are residents. Well, it's a little different in Enfield. You have 13,000 people coming in, but 17,000 leaving. So how can we get 60,000 people in Enfield during the day? It's beyond my comprehension and where this number comes from. It's, sounds like a made-up number. Me. So that's, that's all I'm gonna say. But if you look at the data sheets between Shelton and Enfield, they're pretty similar. The biggest disparity that I seen, and I only did half the data sheet, is the school test scores. We're below state average, they're above state average. A major difference. It's quite a gap, and I think we should do something about to improve our test scores in Enfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else like to speak for the council for the first time? Anyone else? For the second time, anyone else? Mr. Young?
Welcome. George Young, 8 Holly Lane, Enfield. As I previously mentioned, there was a new question-and-answer booklet published by the, of OPM in January 2020, retroactive to October 1, 2019, the assessment date. They have changed the wording in eliminating the sentence that says, and I quote, "Property under a revocable trust will not qualify for the benefit," end of quote. In its place is a new sentence, which says, and I quote, "Per Public Act 19-66, the primary ingredient of the trust agreement is that the owner and such owner's spouse are the grantor and the beneficiary of the trust," end of quote. Does this mean that the revocable trust is now eligible? This is a big change, and I hope that someone can explain this to people trying to get this credit, so it doesn't get rejected months later when OPM reviews it after it leaves Enfield for approval. Seniors should know that there is always the possibility to appeal any decision to our Assessors' Office or to the Secretary of the OPM. In addition, I would like to remind people that if you are rejected, then you can reapply the next year if your circumstances change, without having to wait the two years. Also, if you're approved and your circumstances change within the two years, you can also reapply. There's a lot of information in this area, and I hope the town staff will continue to get the support of the director to implement and inform the staff of all the changes which are necessary to complete the application properly. Incidentally, it's not on the sheet that I gave you, but veterans should know that even if you are not qualified for the elderly credit, you can still be qualified for the veterans exemption. Is it, is it possible to get a more accurate figure on the number of seniors, et cetera, that participate in this program? Because approximately 500 participants that we heard at the last meeting makes me feel leery of the total cost. I feel that when I inquired in the summer of 2018 at the Assessors' Office, it was about 591 participants. That would make a big difference in the average dollar each participant was awarded. Remember, it is per house, not per individual. Two or more qualified individuals in one house is one participant. If we used the 500 figure, then the $600,000 budget that we're spending would equate to $1,200 per household. That seems kind of high to me. As I understand the program, the credit maximum is $1,250 for a married couple and $1,000 for a single person, and the scale has graduated based on income, similar to the Internal Revenue Service. I hope the town will continue this type of informative program, which I think was very useful. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak for the council for the second time? Anyone else? Going once, going twice? Declare public communications closed. Moving on to Item 8, Council Communications. Councilor Srazza and then Councilman Genie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have just two, two things I'd like to speak about. We don't get into back and forth on the council with the public, and I don't have any information, nor would I speak about it, about what went down over at Enfield High School. But the gentleman, I think, asked a very provocative question. He said, "Do we want to criminalize that behavior?" I think the state of Connecticut answered that, and I would hope the community backs that, that when you tell a police officer you're going to punch them, and you go ahead and strike them repeatedly, yes, we want to criminalize that behavior. I absolutely believe that, and I believe most people would support that. If we're not gonna support that, and we're gonna let full-out assaults, physical assaults, on our law enforcement people, what does that say for the safety of the rest of us? And again, I'm not making judgments on this case. I'm not speaking about that. I'm saying, just generally, the question was posed, do we want to criminalize that behavior, punching police officers? I would say yes. That would be a, something we'd want to criminalize. And number two, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move Items E, F, G, H, I, J, and K to miscellaneous and proceed to vote.
Motion made. Second by Councilman Mueller. Any discussion on the motion? Heard anybody show of hands, all those in favor of suspending the rules, opposed, abstentions? We have nine in favor and zero against. Motion passes. All set? Councilman, Council, Councilor Genie, excuse me.
On educational note, I have the honor and the privilege-
Send to your mic.
Thank you. On an educational note, I have the honor and the privilege, as did Councilman Keiner, and I believe Hemler, to read across America at Enfield Street School today, second graders. Oh, and Joe, too.
The mayor.
And the mayor. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I just saw a couple.
I don't have the cool hat on, so you go right ahead.
All right. So, it was, it was wonderful. It was educational. I was actually informed by a second-grade student that one of the books was one of the first that was written by Dr. Seuss, A Cat in a Hat, and I wasn't aware of that. So I learned something. But it was such an engaging audience. It was so much fun. It was really a privilege, and I'm happy that I know in our town, we devote time and we volunteer for our children, and I'm just very thankful for that. I had a good time, so I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Very nice. Guys down? Guys, okay? Councilman Bosco, then we'll come this way.
Through to Mayor and Town Manager. I'm wondering if, I just wanna make sure we're still doing progress on Charles Gardens about their trash. It was brought up to me that we weren't picking it up, and we are picking condos, so just wanna make sure we're going in the right direction there to take care of that, them people. Thank you.
Councilman Hemler.
A few things. Charlotte's not here. She has two sick kiddos at home. I'm sure she's watching, and we miss you, Charlotte. This morning at Enfield Street School was a blast. I got to read, I brought a book with me and gave it to the class, one of the, one of the books that I read both of my kids all the time. Great day for up. The kids were, I went to a kindergartner class, and it was great. I really enjoyed it. This is the fun part of being on the council. Last week, went to the Panera ribbon-cutting, and that was a great privilege to be part of that. It was, a lot of people attended, and a lot of the council was there, and it was just, it's great to see businesses moving forward and moving up. Also, went to a, and Mayor Mike had invited me to go with him, to 90th birthday for Harry, I wanna say it right, Seal Hammers. He, he turned 90 years old. He's a veteran. He is the secretary on the Enfield Veterans Council, and a really great guy, so that was a privilege to be there. I want to ask the town manager through the mayor. A resident had asked me about, there's some potholes on the, going down Enfield Street. Specifically, they had asked about the corner of Spire and Enfield Street. But today, when I was going down the street, I noticed it was at a lot of, a lot of the intersections. So I know it's a state road. I know we're doing a lot of construction, but I just wanted to see what the status is and when, when that can be repaired. Thank you.
Councilman Mueller.
I want to remind the residents, the Buzz Robotics Pasta Supper's this Wednesday, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at St. Bernard's Church. The JFK Building Committee will be meeting this Thursday at 6:30 in the Enfield room. Thank you.
Anyone else? Moving on to Item 9, Town Manager Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few items in response to Mr. Bosco, who's left the room. The Director of Public Works is working with those folks from the Condominium Association, and that matter probably will be addressed after July 1st in the new budget. I would like to also comment that there was an article in the Journal Inquirer tonight, which might have been concern to some of our seniors, that CRT that helps with lunches is gonna be cutting back because of budgetary concerns. And I would just like our residents to know in the council that this is something we have been under discussion with, with Jason Neely, who's the head of the Libraries Inn, Senior Center, and Sheila there, and Mary. They've been talking about it. They have a program in place. We have a contingency to pay for those meals for the weeks that CRT won't, so we will not miss any meals at the senior center. So that should allay any concerns of anybody who read those articles, and they have a plan going forward to try to get sponsorships for that. But otherwise, we have encumbered funds to protect us in the foreseeable future, and we'll address it in the budget. Lastly, just in regard to, obviously, the concerns of our residents, people in the state and in the nation, you know, we're following the coronavirus situation. Likewise, here, you know, we have a role to play. We've been following it. Our Emergency Management Director has been in touch, and also the Health Department, they've given us memos and updates. We followed what the governors had to say. The governor and mayor of New York today were on. We've, we've watched with interest what the president has said from the CDC and the National Institute of Health, and clearly, it will have an impact on all of us for the occasion, if it does occur in the state of Connecticut. To that end, we'll be having a meeting. We've done this in the past with all of our first responders and nurses and the school people, fire chiefs, police chiefs, emergency management. The mayor forwarded on one, a local business that also is going to be taking steps in regard to their own food supply, a company in town. We're inviting them as well. We'll be doing that Thursday. We're not, obviously, gonna do anything extraordinary. We're not at any greater risk than any other community, but we'll be reviewing all of our protocols, and everybody, again, will be on the same page, so that if it does reach the, you know, the boundaries within Connecticut, we'll be as prepared as we can possibly be. And, again, all of the different people I've been, we've communicated with, with the hospitals and healthcare providers, and we've disseminated information. We'll continue to do it, and I'll give you an update after that meeting on Thursday. I think that's it.
Any questions for the town manager? Councilor Srazza?
Chris, with respect to the virus you just spoke of, and I'm sure Steve Hall is gonna take care of this, but we certainly want to make sure that all of our emergency first responders, police, fire, and EMS have the, are outfitted with the PPEs in the cars.
and healthcare providers, and we've disseminated information. We'll continue to do it, and I'll give you an update after that meeting on Thursday. I think that's it.
Any questions for the Town Manager? Counselor Sprazza.
Chris, with respect to the virus you just spoke of, and I'm sure Steve Hall is going to take care of this, but we certainly want to make sure that all of our emergency first responders, police, fire, and EMS have the, are outfitted with the PPEs in the cars, so there's no scrambling for protective equipment. It's all-
They'll be there. The chief is here. They've addressed all of those issues. And I think, fortunately, Enfield is always well-prepared and well-positioned between our first responders, but I think, given the run on supplies, you're going to be left with what you have. And I think there's a lesson to be learned, that you've got to keep your inventories up, you've got to keep your supplies fresh, because when something impacts that affects the entire nation, you're not going to be getting any of those supplies if you don't have them currently. So they're-
And obviously, if our first responders are compromised, then they can't help anybody else.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Town Manager? I just want to say a thank you to Mary, to Jason, and to Allison for the leisure staff. I heard the first meeting of the chess club went great. And again, just a great, great program to offer to our, and I congratulate all the families and the children who are participating. Again, a great game to learn how to strategize and to think. So again, I appreciate the town actually doing it. I actually got a comment on it over the weekend, so, again, great program, and I hope it's very successful. Moving on to Town Attorney, item 10.
Mr. Mayor, there's no Town Attorney report tonight.
You sound disappointed in that tone.
Nothing we can discuss. No legal issues, at least not publicly.
You better knock on wood. Any questions for our Town Attorney? Thank you, sir. Moving on to item 11, report of any special committees. Are there any reports of the special committees? Hearing none? Oops, sorry. Counselor Sprazza.
Last Monday, I represented the town of Enfield up in Hartford at the Regional CROG meeting, the Transportation Division. And the topic of conversation last Monday was the fact that Governor Lamont has pulled the tolls off the table. And then they went on to say that I think the governor's plan at this point is to bond for transportation, but this committee felt that might be a problem because the bonding dollars are fixed, and that there's competing interests. There are school projects, it's can't all go for transportation, so everything's kind of up in the air. And just as a quick side note, I personally never supported the tolls, and I think that this council took the lead on that last year among criticism, people saying that it's a state issue, what are we doing? I'm not taking credit. The council's not taking credit for what happened with the tolls, but we heard what the people said. We passed a resolution here that we were against it, and we were contacted very shortly thereafter by other towns, and in the end, there might have been, I don't know, Mike, 16 or 20 towns that-
I think it was 20.
-that passed that resolution, so I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Moving on to item 12, Old Business. Items A1 and 2 remain on the table. Do I have a motion to remove item 3, the Enfield Beautification Committee, off the table? By Councilor Mueller, second by Councilor Mangini. By show of hands, all those in favor moving from the table. Opposed, abstentions? Nine in favor, zero against. To remove from the table, now do we have a nomination? Please.
I'll nominate Carolyn Sordell.
Nomination by Counselor Mangini, second by Counselor Mueller. Do I have a motion to close nominations? Counselor Sprazza, second by Counselor Sikala. All those in favor of closing nominations, by show of hands. Opposed, abstentions? Nine in favor and zero against for closing nominations. Any discussion on the main motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Sprazza?
Four.
Counselor Ungar?
Four.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sikala?
Carolyn Sordell.
Counselor Hemler?
Four.
Counselor Keiner?
Four.
Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Carolyn Sordell.
That's nine in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Moving on to the top of page two, under Old Business. Items four through eight remain on the table. Do I have a motion to remove Joint Facilities Committee, number nine, from the table? By Counselor Mueller, second by Counselor Mangini. By show of hands, all those in favor by moving from the table. Opposed, abstentions? Nine in favor, zero against. Do we have a nomination? Please. By Counselor Mueller. Mr. Neville? Motion made. Second by Counselor Mangini. Do I have a motion to close nominations? By Counselor Sprazza, second by Counselor Mueller. All those in favor of closing nominations, by show of hands. Abstentions against, nine in favor, zero against. No abstentions. Any discussion on the main motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Sprazza?
Four.
Counselor Ungar?
Four.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sikala?
Tim Neville.
Counselor Hemler?
Four.
Counselor Keiner?
Four.
Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Tim Neville.
That's nine in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Items 10 and 11 remain on the table, under Old Business. Item 12, the Patriot Award Committee, Veterans Council, the reappointment, and I apologize, I'm going to just say Iggy Maniscallo. I didn't want to remember his first name. Do I have a, do I have a motion to remove from the table? By Counselor Mueller, second by Counselor Mangini. All those in favor moving from the table, by show of hands. Opposed, abstentions? Nine in favor, zero against. Does someone like to reappoint the nomination of Iggy Maniscallo? By Counselor Mueller, second by Counselor Sprazza. Do I have a motion to close nominations? Counselor Mangini, second by Counselor Sikala. All those in favor of closing nominations, by show of hands. Opposed, abstentions? Nine in favor, zero against. Do we have a discussion on the main motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Sprazza?
Four.
Counselor Ungar?
Four.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sikala?
Four.
Counselor Hemler?
Four.
Counselor Keiner?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Ignatius Maniscalco.
There it is. There it is. I want to come close, so.
Good job.
So if nine in favor, none against, no abstentions.
I know my limitations. I move in item 13, Patriot Ward Veterans Council. Do I have a motion to remove from the table? By Counselor Mangini, second by Counselor Mueller. To remove from the table, all those in favor? Against abstentions? Nine in favor, zero against. Nomination by Counselor Mangini?
Frank Pacini?
Motion made. Second by Counselor Mueller. Motion made by Counselor Mangini, second by Counselor Mueller. Do I have a motion to close nominations? By Counselor Mueller, second by Counselor Sikala. All those in favor of closing nominations, by show of hands. Opposed, abstentions? Nine in favor, zero against. Any discussion on the main motion? Hearing none by roll call, please.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Sprazza?
Four.
Counselor Ungar?
Four.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sikala?
Frank Pacini.
Counselor Hemler?
Four.
Counselor Keiner?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini? Nine in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Item 14 remains on the table. On the bottom of page two, appointments by the Town Manager. Items B1 and 2, again, remain tabled. Items 3 through 16, on page 3, again, no appointments. Moving up to the page, the top four, excuse me, on top of page four, again, under Town Manager appointments. C, P&amp;Z Commission Appointed Counsel approved, there are none. Moving to item 13, new business. There is no consent agenda under item A. Item B, there is no council appointments. Item C, there is no Town Manager appointments. Item D, there is no P&amp;Z Commission Appointed Counsel approved. Discussion resolution regarding the adoption of policy procedures remains tabled to the next meeting. So that remains tabled. We move on to item 14, items for discussion. Again, item A, there is no consent agenda. Item B, there's no appointments by the Town Council. Item C, there's no appointments by the Town Manager. Item D, there's no P&amp;Z Commission Appointed Counsel approved. Items E, F, G, H, I, J, and K have all been moved to miscellaneous. And we will move to miscellaneous. Sorry, let me get there. We will go item E. Get to the resolution. Okay, item E, sorry, excuse me. Under miscellaneous, request transfer funds for community development historic preservation office of $50,000, resolved in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfers hereby made. To community development, $50,000, from community development of $50,000. Certification is made, hereby made by the above funds are available as of February 20, 2020, by the Director of Finance, John Wilcox, approved by the Town Manager, Christopher Bronson. Counselor Mueller, second by Counselor Mangini. Nelson?
Nelson is here to discuss this.
Since he's been patient, come on up.
Yes.
Yep. I think it's good for folks to hear this. Thank you. Welcome back from vacation, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, Town Council. This is just a request of transfer funds to our, sorry, community development account. These are existing grant funds that came to, from the state of Connecticut's Department of Economic and Community Development through the State Historic Preservation Office. We received two grants, which totaled $50,000. One of them was to conduct a town-wide historic resource inventory survey. We are currently under contract with the historical consultant. Work is to proceed in the spring and to be finalized in the fall. The other grant was for $20,000 under a historic preservation enhancement grant, which totaled $20,000, for us to conduct two state and national registered nominations of two town-owned historic buildings. One on 100 High Street. That application is currently with the state for approval on the state register of historic places. I'm hoping to have the nomination made in either the end of March or the end of April so that the Opera House players can begin applying for state historic tax credits in support of the rehabilitation of their building they currently lease from the town. The other property is 33 North River Street, which is currently being prepared for national register nomination by our historical consultant. None of the funds are coming from the town. It's all money that's coming from the state into this account.
Very cool. Any questions for Nelson?
Good stuff. I mean, it'd be great to hear on High Street. I would say it'd be great first, and then hopefully, timing will be everything, and when it comes to 33 North River Street.
You know, I would just add that Nelson, since his arrival here in short order, has applied for and received many grants, and we're continuing that effort. We've put together a grant committee. Nelson and the Assistant Town Manager, Kasia Percello, are working on Grant Finder, which lists grants that are from all over the country, from private to government to corporate. And you know, contrary to what we think, given these tough economic times, there's a lot of grant money out there. So with this group, we hope to avail ourselves of some of that funding for projects that certainly alleviate the need for our taxpayers to have to pay some that we have to do. And Nelson's been doing a really good job of looking at projects that were under mandates to complete and find state or federal money to assist us in accomplishing that. So I thank him for his efforts.
Any questions for Nelson? Thank you, sir. Roll call, please.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Sprazza?
Four.
Counselor Ungar?
Four.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sikala?
Four.
Counselor Hemler?
Four.
Counselor Keiner?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
It's nine in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Moving on to item F, under miscellaneous. Resolution authorizes any expenditure for the Henry Barnard School Roof Replacement Project Phase 3, resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby authorize the funding in the amount of $301,340 for the roof replacement project Phase 3 at Henry Barnard Elementary School, prepared on February 21, 2020, by the Town Manager's office. By Counselor Mueller, second by Counselor Mangini.
Mr. Seikley is here, if you have questions, because he likes nothing more than to spend his Monday evenings with the Enfield Town Council.
So welcome. Maybe a little timing, and I think this is great. I mean, you know, it's great, we're going to finish this, which is really good, so. I know, yeah, this is some good news, so if you want to give a little quick update on when this is going to occur.
Sure. So this is the last step in being able to submit the grant application, which will go in hopefully this week, by the end of this week, to the state. And we're still on target to complete this roof this summer.
That's great. Any questions? It's really good news. Any questions?
The last section of this roof, I should say.
We've done it in three phases. We've done it the hard way, but, you know. Yeah, any questions? I mean, this is good news, and then we'll be able to apply for the 70% reimbursement.
Correct.
Right, which is what people, I think that's key for people to understand.
Yes.
You know, we had to do it this way, so we now can hopefully get reimbursed.
Right. Once it's done, all the invoices will be submitted to the state for the reimbursement.
Very cool. Anything else? Thank you for hanging out. Appreciate it. Roll call, please.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Sprazza?
Four.
Counselor Ungar?
Four.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sikala?
Four.
Counselor Hemler?
Four.
Counselor Keiner?
Four.
Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
It's nine in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thanks very much. Thanks for hanging. Yep. Moving on to item G, resolution temporary moving of JFK, John F. Kennedy Middle School voting locations to the Senior Center. Let's see, does that have a resolution? Whereas due to the construction of John F. Kennedy Middle School, the registered voters wish to temporarily move the voting location for the Town Council District 1 and the portions of State House Districts 58 and 59 located within District 1 to the Enfield Senior Center. Now therefore be it resolved, the Enfield Town Council does hereby move the voting location of the above referenced Town Council and State House Districts to the Enfield Senior Center effective May 1, 2020. Be it further resolved in accordance with Connecticut General Statute Sections 9-168, comma 9-16A, comma 9-168B, and 9-169. The Secretary of State office will be notified of this change, and in addition, all the registered voters in said district will also be notified, prepared on February 6, 2020, by the registered voters. So move. By Councilor Mangini, second by Councilor Mueller. I mean, I think they did a really nice job presenting it, very detailed. I don't know if you guys have any questions. Councilor Basco?
Well, I don't like it, but I don't think we have any other choice. I mean, they put it right out in front of us, why we couldn't use different things and what they did, so we got no choice. I'll support it.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Agreed, gentlemen, did a really nice job presenting it, so well done. Roll call, please.
Councilor Miller.
Four.
Councilor Schfarza.
Four.
Councilor Ungar.
Four.
Councilor Basco.
Four.
Councilor Sikala.
Four.
Councilor Hamler.
Four.
Councilor Keiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
It's nine in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Have a good night. Thank you. Moving on to item H, under miscellaneous, resolution authorizing the Town Manager to sign grant applications to be submitted to the North Central Area Agency on Aging for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Whereas the North Central Agency on Aging, NCAA, provides several grants to the Town's Department of Social Services. Whereas Department of Social Services in the process of submitting grant applications to the NC AAA for funds that will be available to the town in fiscal year 2020, 2021. Resolved that the Town Manager, Christopher D. Bronson, has authorized to sign and submit the grant applications subject to review and approval by the Town Attorney in the name on behalf of the Town of Enfield with the North Central Area Agency on Aging and to fix the corporate seal, submitted on March 2, 2020, by Cindy Guerrier, the Director of Social Services. By Councilor Mueller, second by Councilor Mangini. Welcome. Name and title for the record, and you have the floor, ma'am.
Cindy Guerrier, Director of Social Services. This is our annual reapplication, and it sustains the programs for isolated seniors, our outreach efforts, the Enfield Cares, which is the at-risk registry, and then the senior or minor repair.
Questions for Cindy? I think you're getting off easy.
Oh, she sat here for the previous two hours and did all those applications, so I think she paid her dues.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Councilor Miller.
Four.
Councilor Schfarza.
Four.
Councilor Ungar.
Four.
Councilor Basco.
Four.
Councilor Sikala.
Four.
Councilor Hamler.
Four.
Councilor Keiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
It's nine in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you very much. You're standing right there?
I was gonna say.
Moving on to I, under miscellaneous, resolution to schedule a public hearing regarding fiscal year 2020, 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program for Shelter Diversion Program. Whereas the Department of Social Services intends to apply for fiscal year 2020, 2021 Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Funds. Whereas Community Development Block Grant Program Regulation 24 CFR 570 dot 486, parentheses A, require that a public hearing be held to discuss the proposed application. Whereas the council wishes to seek input from the residents of the Town of Enfield Regarding Town Shelter Diversion Program and Other Potential Project Ideas Based on Need. Now therefore be it resolved, the council will hold a public hearing in the Enfield Town Council Hall of Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, on Monday, March 16, 2020, at 6:50 PM to allow interested residents an opportunity to express their opinions regarding the proposed application, submitted on February 21, 2020 by the Department of Social Services. By Councilor Mangini, second by Councilor Mueller.
Requirement of the application, again, this is a reapplication, and the requirement for the public hearing to hear feedback and comments on the Shelter Diversion Program, which is somewhat shorthanded, people refer to it as the homeless grant, but it's really diverting people from the shelter by trying to connect them with supports and services in the community and within their home, their families.
Any questions? So I know we spoke earlier a little bit about the network of domestic abuse.
Right. They actually get priority by the state.
Perfect. Yeah, that's what I thought. So how is the, I mean, real quick, how's the program going? I know we implemented this about a year ago-ish.
Started implementing it in December.
Yeah, okay.
So relatively new. Westport is the other town that got this grant. They started just in September. So a lot of it is learning how to get the word out, identify locations for people to come in and have their assessments, working with the warming center now, doing them live at the warming center. So we're really expanding where. We're doing them at Loaves and Fishes as well.
Great.
So just reaching out to make sure that people know where they can go to have an assessment and try to connect them the best we can.
Sorry, have we diverted anybody from going so far?
I would say four.
That's great.
Right? And actually, the numbers, we were looking at the numbers today statewide, the pit count, that's an annual count to find, to literally count people that are homeless. And thankfully, in Connecticut, the numbers have been going down. 2013, 14 was a high amount, and it's been going down every year thereafter. So the number of, the definition for homeless is very stringent, and so that number is decreasing. So the good news is there's not as many, but it's really trying to connect the chronically homeless with services that they need.
But still four is a pretty good number.
It's a very good number, given the number statewide is like 400-some chronically homeless.
So just, if I could for future par, it'd be great. I know we don't have to give names or locations, but it'd be great to continue to know that this program, again, is doing what it's intended to do, which was to divert people from coming homeless.
And connecting them to service.
Exactly right. Yeah, I think that's great. Sorry. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Councilor Miller.
Four.
Councilor Schfarza.
Four.
Councilor Ungar.
Four.
Councilor Basco.
Four.
Councilor Sikala.
Four.
Councilor Hamler.
Four.
Councilor Keiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
It's nine in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Moving on to item J, under miscellaneous, resolution to schedule a public hearing regarding, you still up?
That's Nelson. You can't have them all, Cindy.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay. Thank you. Resolution to schedule a public hearing regarding the fiscal year 2020, 21 Community Development Block Grant Program for Housing Needs. Whereas the Office of Community Development intends to apply for fiscal year 2020, 2021 Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Funds. Whereas Community Development Block Grant Program Regulation 24 CFR, let me make sure, am I doing the right one? Hold on. Make sure. I am, okay. It sounds pretty similar to the last one, sorry. 24 CFR 570 dot 486, parentheses A, requires a public hearing be held to discuss the proposed application. Whereas the Town Council wishes to seek input from residents of the Town of Enfield regarding the town's community development and housing needs and potential project ideas. Now therefore be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council will hold a public hearing in the Enfield Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, on Monday, March 16, 2020, at 6:55 PM to allow interested residents an opportunity to express their opinion regarding the proposed application, submitted on February 10, 2020 by the Office of Community Development. By Councilor Mueller, second by Councilor Mangini. Welcome, come up, sir.
Cindy missed one last week because we separated, so she's being cautious to make sure she's here.
Yeah, so this is the, again, Nelson Tereso, Office of Community Development. This is the same pot of money. The town's eligible to apply for both homeless shelter diversion and for CDPG for housing projects, affordable housing projects in town. So it's my recommendation for this year that we apply again. Last year, we did receive a grant through this program to cover electrical upgrades at Laurel Park. That project is proceeding as planned. The Enfield Housing Authority is in the process of preparing the final bid package to go out the bid. We're finalizing the contract with the State of Connecticut's Department of Housing to close on the grant.
And Nelson, could you just share how much that was?
It was $175,000 and an additional $75,000 that we need to spend from our existing program income account that we have here in Town Hall through the revolving loan program for housing rehab. So it's a total of $250,000, and the Enfield Housing Authority's covering all the admin and the engineering, and we're covering all the hard costs. Now, this round, I'm making a recommendation to go out for $200,000. $100,000 I'm recommending to cover the housing rehab program. When I first got here in town, we had about $200,000 in the, in our program income for housing rehab. We've moved $100,000 of that for the first-time homebuyer program, which is moving forward as planned.
Which, you know, it's on the agenda, it's appropriate. Could you please just give, because you prepared for me, a brief thumbnail on that. It's been successful. I think it's important to note, when we come up with a very innovative program like that, to see then what the results were. Could you just give them the status report on that and remind them what it was?
It's now a town-wide program, Thompsonville, that section of Thompsonville's a forgivable area. We've closed on two properties, one in Thompsonville on Russell Ave, Russell Street, I'm sorry, 1618 Russell Street. That was the first home we closed on, a nice young couple purchased the home.
And what's key there? Owner occupied, two family, too.
Correct. Two-family owner occupied, and we provided a forgivable loan of about $8,600. And that happened in December. Then in January, we closed on another loan, a deferred loan, off of Brainerd Road, Till Street, on Brainerd Road, off of Brainerd Road, a single mother, and she purchased the home, and it's about a $6,000 deferred loan.
And we're working on a third.
Correct. We are working on a third.
I think it's just remarkable, because understand, these are people who, it's their first time home, and they bought it in Enfield, and there's a good chance it's because of this program. So not only will we be able to help a family, but we also had them make that decision to come to Enfield, not just Thompsonville, but another part of town as well. So I, again, commend, this is an innovative program. It's offered, I don't know, the state was just really enchanted with it. They will replenish the money. They wanted to see how it went, and I think it's another great success story, and it just shows the innovation and cutting edge of the things we're doing in the town of Enfield.
So like I was saying, we had about $200,000 in housing rehab. $100,000 went the first-time homebuyer, and then $75,000 is going towards Laurel Park electrical upgrades, which leaves us with about $25,000 currently in our housing rehab account. So I'm going to make a request for additional $100,000 to replenish that account to make sure that we can provide deferred loans to, and this housing rehab program is basically to provide improvements to low-to-moderate-income families for building code violations, fire code violations, emergency repairs to their home. So it's administered by my office, and we get support from our building department on the inspection of the, and the procurement of the contractors to do the work.
And then lastly, because I will tell you, we were sort of, I think, asleep for a little while in this town on a lot of these initiatives, and the state looks at that. If you're not doing anything, I mean, they actually said to us, spend the money, we're gonna take it back in some areas because we weren't, we weren't moving forward. And then I just, lastly, because a lot of this, it's all interconnected, we talked about blight a little earlier, could you just give, we've, I've given updates to the council, we're gonna be posting it, we're actually filming it for before and after, we're gonna do a presentation at a future six-to-seven meeting, but could you just tell us just briefly about the blight remediation and the demolitions that have taken place in the last week or two, and will be taking place in the next couple of weeks? Another incredible success story, and a, just a huge increase in the quality of life to the neighborhoods where we're taking down these blighted properties, where neighbors have had to look at these eyesores for years and years and years, and now they won't have to.
Sure. The town hired about a month ago, a little, a couple months ago, Associated Building Records out of Springfield, Massachusetts, to do the demolition of town-owned properties, 28 South River Street and 32 Church Street. We've proceeded with the demolition of 28 South River, three, two of the three structures have been demolished. We did our second building inspection on the foundation of one of the structures today. They are proceeding with the live loading of the, what they call a hot building. It was deemed condemned by the town, so we could not evaluate it from an environmental standpoint, so it has to come down hot. That's gonna begin, I believe, tomorrow. I've been out on the site each day, making sure that there's no neighbor complaints, talking to the contractors to make sure that nobody's coming by. The site is secured with fencing each day, and work is proceeding as planned. In about 10 days, I would say, five to 10 days, Church Street's going to start. They submitted the demolition permit today for Church Street, so it's proceeding.
And I'm trying to say, when he says town-owned properties, these weren't properties that the town caused to be blighted. We took them through the blight process and foreclosed on them, and now, because of our other innovative program that this council adopted, where we now have realtors in place, when those properties are cleared, we will then market them, and we will return them to tax rolls with new housing in those neighborhoods. It's quite incredible, because having been here for 30 years with the chief, we used to take walks in the past and walk by these and go, whoa, wasn't that terrible? What can we do about it? Well, now we're doing something about it, and it's very rewarding. And I will just tell you that the neighbors are very appreciative, and this is only the beginning. We have others in the pipeline that the Town Council has given green lights, so that we're in the process. Because of blight and fines and liens, we're in the process of foreclosing on those, they're in the court system, and when we have title, we will do the same thing with those properties as well. So we mean business, and we want every neighborhood in Enfield to enjoy a high quality of life.
And the other project I did talk to Chris about, our lease is expiring at the Adult Aid Care Center on March 31. As part of our lease agreement, the Enfield Housing Authority has the ability to require the town to demolish the Adult Aid Care Center. So in case that situation does happen, I am going to make a recommendation to apply for money to assist with the demolition of the Adult Aid Care Center, due to the fact that we are, the lease is gonna expire at the end of the month, and it's located within the Mark Twain Congregate Living Housing Authority, and it'll provide additional open space to people living at the Adult Aid Care Center.
And again, there's something that we knew was gonna be coming. We've been in constant contact with the Housing Authority, with Scott Bertrand, we're working collaboratively with them. But again, here's an obligation that we have, and through the resources and diligence of Community Development Office, hopefully, we'll be able to have that cost paid because we're eligible for a grant that we're going to pursue. So again, very important initiative for us to pursue.
So those are just the recommendations. The public hearing will take place in two weeks to get public comment, to see if anybody else has any input on other projects that we could apply for.
Any questions for Nelson? Very. My only question for you is funny, with the, I know with the money, with the rehab, is there, is there a possible friendly handoff if someone's in front of our blight committee there, where they might qualify for some of this? You know, do we have that kind of, you know, friendly, you know, baton, if we know someone's in blight and they're struggling, but they might qualify for this program?
They could qualify. It has, again, it has to be a building code violation, and they have to be eligible for the program. They have to meet income levels, owner occupied, so.
Okay, all right.
And again, just because so much is going on, I could put more items on the agenda than we would have the time in the evening for, but just in regard to the Adult Aid Care, so everyone is aware, Cindy has provided an update in regard to the transition of the residents there, and I'm happy to report that all residents have found other facilities to go to, primarily the Felician sisters. They will all be transitioning there, and they all have their transportation needs being met. So I think, given, you know, what we have dealt with on that issue, that's a good resolution, and I'll follow up with Cindy's email to the council tomorrow.
Anything else, sir?
Nope.
Roll call, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Miller.
Four.
Councilor Schfarza.
Four.
Councilor Ungar.
Four.
Councilor Basco.
Four.
Councilor Sikala.
Four.
Councilor Hamler.
Four.
Councilor Keiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
It's nine in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Moving on to item K, under miscellaneous, resolution authorizing the Town Manager to enter a memorandum of understanding with RECOR recognition. Whereas RECOR recognition system seeks to grant two software licenses to the Town of Enfield/Enfield Police Department under the terms of a memorandum of understanding. Whereas these licenses will provide a search capability within the video footage captured by the Enfield Police Department Joint Operations Center that will vastly improve unit efficiency and crime-solving capabilities. Whereas the Town of Enfield may discontinue use of this software license within their discretion in the future, should they show so-wish. Now therefore be it resolved, the Enfield Town Council will authorize the Town Manager to enter a memorandum of understanding in furtherance of the receipt of these software licenses submitted on March 2, 2020 by the Police Department. By Councilor Mueller, second by Councilor Mangini. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Floor's yours. I just, I know you, everyone, but title, and then you got the floor, sir.
Chief Alderick Fox, Enfield Police Department. RECOR is a vendor who simply seeks to provide us with these two software licenses, no cost, no obligation, no expense. However, it's just not as simple as taking them. It has to be done under an MOU. That triggered the obligation to have Mr. Bronson's signature, which triggers my presence before you today.
Any questions for the chief? Councilor Mangini.
Thank you, chief, for staying so long.
Yes, ma'am.
The question I have, we currently don't have the program in place. We currently don't have the grant, or we're looking to get into it?
Correct. We do not have it. Imagine, if you will, that there was a report of an evading vehicle, and it was a red truck, and the accident occurred sometime between 7:00 and 9:00. We would view our video footage by hand. This allows the video footage to be searchable.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for the chief?
It's important to note, the chief has worked with this company to be offering this to us at no current cost or future cost, so it's a great opportunity.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for sticking around.
Yes, ma'am.
Not a whole lot of questions for you. Roll call, please.
Councilor Miller.
Four.
Councilor Schfarza.
Four.
Councilor Ungar.
Four.
Councilor Basco.
Upstanding.
Councilor Sikala.
Four.
Councilor Hamler.
Four.
Councilor Keiner. I'm sorry? Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
That's eight in favor, one abstention.
Moving on to item 16, public communications. Would anyone like to speak for the public this time? Again, on behalf of an Enfield resident, and please refrain from personalities, you have three minutes. And, Bob, sorry, I wasn't looking up. Bob.
Welcome.
Hear me?
I can hear you.
At Teacats Woodgate Circle. I think this public should be open to beyond Enfield residents because there's some, some people out of town would have some good suggestions for the Town Council. The previous Town Manager said Enfield was the third-largest real estate holder in Enfield. I just want to know when you're going to put Enrico Fermi High on the list for an auction to see what kind of money you would bring in, because that's a prime piece of property. It may not happen. It may not be any interest, like the real estate people at Mass Mutual said there's very little interest. There's 1,500 people left at Mass Mutual. There was 3,000 at one time, and all those people will be going to Springfield, the Enfield residents, so that's going to take that 17,000 going out at 1,500 and subtract 1,500 for the people coming in. So that even makes it a worse condition, and it's very unusual. But I want to talk about State Line. I know State Line. I've been up there since 1946. The west side of Enfield Street at State Line is in nice condition. There's a lot of improvements on that side. The pride station's going to be done. You've got the McDonald's in beautiful shape. There's a Dunkin' Donuts going in. It's pristine on that side. But the other side, abandoned buildings. Earl Street, right next to the old Interstate Tire, the building that was before had, the zoning enforcement officer wrote them up. There was a parked trailer truck next to the property on the building. The owner moved that trailer truck to the abandoned Longhorn Restaurant and got that in the parking lot. And back at Longhorn, there's a lot of trash and debris. The south side of the building, it looks like the wall's going to collapse. It's, it's deteriorating. I don't know if that illegally can keep that truck there. The seafood place has a lot, a lot of junk on the side of the building, which should be cleaned up. The Asian restaurant has a lot of junk in the back. I rode around there Sunday looking. Now, the end of Earl Street or Roy Street, there's a lot of debris in that corner. I don't know who owns that, the town or the state. I would request the Town Manager to have somebody go down and clean it up. And also on Roy Street, there's three, looks like, three vehicles that are parked in the tree belt. There's a fence for the property, and there's the curb, but there's three vehicles. There's plates on them, two Connecticut plates, Connecticut plates on two cars, and a Massachusetts plate. And those cars have been sitting there since, you got the grass is still underneath the cars. And I don't even know if those cars are registered. So I would request the Town Manager to have the police department look at those vehicles to see if they're junk, and if they illegally could be towed out of there. But people are trying to.
Second, sorry.
Yeah, people are trying to improve that neighborhood, and I would like to have the town try to help them improve that area by helping them clean it up because the east side is getting pretty seedy. And if you're going to, if Mass Mutual, you're going to sell that and want to put them back on the tax rolls, you have to make that area pristine. Back in the 20s, they wanted to name the State Line the Gateway to Connecticut, but we can't, we can't call it Gateway to Connecticut. It's a gateway to a junkyard. It makes the town look bad when people are entering it from Long Meadow. I think we should have some program to improve that area. There's a lot, a lot of people are trying, but we should get involved in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else like to speak for the council at this time? Mr. Young?
George Young, 8 Holly Lane. I just want to end on a positive note. I heard this thing tonight about the Community Development Block Grant Program. I think this is a great idea because there's two things that I see happening here. One is, I don't know if you read this month's Fortune magazine, but there was a great article in San Francisco about the homeless. The problem there is they have all these tentacle people, and the price of housing has gone through the roof. They have so much homelessness that the mayor is really concerned, and that's all she talks about. I think it's good that we have something where we are really working on that, and the fact that it's coming down in this state is great, and I'm sure that this program is something that's helping. The second thing is, we're talking about home loan forgiveness for some of these people that are possibly getting a home loan for the first time home buyer program. I don't know many of you, if many of you remember, but the federal government used to have a program under the IRS, which they would give you forgiveness up to about $8,000 as long as you stayed in your home for a certain number of years. It was a great program to get people started, and every year you had a report on your tax return, what year it was and whether or not, and if you moved, you may have to pay it back. I don't know if that's in this program, but I think that's a great idea, and it looks like to me you've replaced something that people need. So that was my positive comment to end the evening. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak for the council at this time? Anyone else like to speak for the council at this time? Hearing none, I will declare public communications closed. Item 17, do we have any council communications this time? Councilor Ungar?
I just wanted to say shortly after our last Town Council meeting, I attended a legislative breakfast in Hartford. It was regarding education in the state. I like to keep my toe in what's going on in the state with education. Wendy Costa was there and Jonathan LeBlanc. An interesting opportunity came up during that meeting. They're looking for minority teachers, and through CAE, they're going to offer a program where if you already have your bachelor's degree, they'll fund you to get your teaching certificate. So I thought if anybody's interested in that, I'd like to put that out there. Also, I wanted to comment on one of the statements that Bob made. The, our council meetings, when we're here on Monday nights, aren't the only opportunity that people can come and speak. Our phone numbers are out there, and any resident is welcome to call us if they have